Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the August 3 meeting of the City Council to order, please. This meeting is properly notified and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2, our closed caption for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits. Once outside, assemble on the Las Vegas Boulevard side of the property. Employees wearing safety vests, or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Pastor Benny Jack's Victory Outreach Las Vegas? And please remain standing for the pledge.
If I could have everybody, please, bow their heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, Lord, and we ask, God, that you would just take hold of this entire meeting, Lord, throughout this day. I pray, God, that you would give Mayor Carolyn, Lord, and the City Council, God, wisdom. Give them illumination, enlighten them in revelation, God, and everything that they need, Father, in order, Lord, to do what you have called them to do, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the ceremonial portion of the agenda, and for our first item, we will be coming on down there. Thank you very much. I just asked Councilman Wolfson how he gets down here, and can you believe what he said, that he gets down here so fast? Because of youth. But I appreciate it, it is. He is way younger, and I appreciate it. I'm gonna watch. His youth. Well, this is a very exciting time for us, the ceremonial portion of the agenda, and our first item. Mayor Pro Tem Anthony is going to present the August Citizen of the Month. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, what a turnout here, geez. Can we get a picture of the Gerheim t-shirts down here? Can we get them on TV, huh? Who's in charge of... Okay, well, I'm sure we'll get on there. As the mayor said, it's my honor today to recognize the Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas. And as I was trying to think of who to honor today, kinda reminded myself of one of the things I try to do in Ward 4, and I know every other city councilman and woman up here do the same thing, is try to visit and support the schools in our ward, whether it's elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. We try to do that, whether it's bring backpacks, books. I know Councilman Tarkania had a big event last night at one of her schools. So we try to spend some time in these schools, and I will tell you, I'm just gonna speak for Ward 4. When I visit the schools in Ward 4, I find three important components. First of all, I find great teachers. I mean, teachers that go to school every single day to educate these kids. They are outstanding teachers. I find outstanding administrators, from the principal on down, that go to school every single day to educate our kids and provide them the values that they need. But the third part of that, which I think is just as important, is parental involvement. And there are plenty of studies and research that's been done that shows parent involvement in their kids' education is going to do great things for them. These studies show that kids get higher grades, higher test scores, higher graduation rates, better school attendance, increased motivation, better self-esteem, lower rates of suspension, less use of drugs and alcohol, and fewer instances of violent behavior. So, and when I go to my schools in Ward 4, I find a lot of parents that are involved in their kids' education, whether it's volunteering their time at the school, spending time with homework, the events that I put on in Ward 4, like cleaning up a park across the street from Gerheim, or a movie in the park. Parents show up. They're very involved. And what I wanted to do today was a little something different. There wasn't a particular citizen I wanted to recognize today, but I wanted to recognize all the parents in the city of Las Vegas, and really in the entire valley, that spend time with their teachers, with their administrators, and with their kids, providing a quality education for our students. And so it's my honor today to recognize, as a Citizen of the Month, all the parents in Southern Nevada, and that are involved in their child's education, and to basically represent them. I've decided to recognize the Gerheim Heights Citizen Club, which is the parent organization for the Edith Gerheim Elementary School in Ward 4, and I would like to invite several of their executive board members to come up. Jeanette Harmon, Jeanette, would you please come up? Brandy Harbauer. And Marie Duncan. Marie, if you could come up here. This is the executive board of the parent organization at Gerheim Elementary School that represents the parents that spend a lot of time with their kids' education. And I'd like to have Jeanette talk a little bit about what exactly her club, her organization does, and what the parents do to support their kids.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is such an honor. We're so appreciative. We really, I represent a very large portion of parents at our school that participate every day because they love it, because they wanna be there for their children. It's so important. Not every parent can do what we do, because they have to work, and we understand that. So we feel like it's our responsibility, those that can, to really show up and be there for the children, from fundraising to being in the classroom and reading with the children, and really just being another step in enriching their education. School is not just about learning. School is about creating a wonderful social environment for your children. It's about enriching their lives, and I think the parents at Gerheim really work very, very hard to do that. And we have been really fortunate, because we've had such wonderful support from Councilman Anthony and his staff and the city. They've been so generous. They come out, and the best part is they're so excited to be around the kids, that the kids feel that, and they love having you there, so thank you so much. This is a wonderful honor, and we're really appreciative.
Thank you very much. And I also like to have Principal Kressman and Assistant Principal Vera Halcy come up here, who are the leaders at Gerheim Elementary School. And if you could just talk a little bit about parents' involvement at your school, and parents' involvement in general.
Certainly. Thank you. And it is a great honor for all of us today, so thank you all for having us. I do wanna say that we could not do what we do at our school, and we do have a wonderful school. You're all welcome to come and visit, but we couldn't do it without our parents. You know, the word volunteer doesn't speak strongly enough to what our parents do. And as you can see, school isn't in for another three weeks, but we have a representation of our parent organization, and all of the chairs of our committee, and their children here to support us today. And that is just a representation of our entire parent group. They volunteer so much that you would think that they were on the payroll. The funny thing is, they're not on the payroll, and they come every day smiling, happy, and just wanna do everything they can do to support our children. At our school, we operate a model city. Every classroom operates a business or governmental agency. That takes a lot of extra work. It takes a village, and that village is our parents and our community. So we are so glad to be here and for our parents to be honored, because sometimes I think that doesn't happen. They do so much of the work in the background, and so we are thrilled that we're here today to do that with them as well, and that we can be there with them, and we hope they stay a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Even when their kids graduate, you want them to stick around? Okay. All right. If I could have all the parents and kids in the front row stand up and just be recognized. Why don't you all stand up? Kids, parents, whoever else is here from Gerheim, thanks for coming down. So on behalf of the mayor, the entire city council, I would like to proclaim the Citizen of the Month, all the parents in Southern Nevada who make sure their kids get a good education, and to represent them, is the Gerheim Heights Citizen Club. And I'm gonna give you a nice little plaque, but over here, we have the Citizen of the Month sign that'll be displayed at 4th Street, next to City Hall, for the entire month of August. So you can go by there and get your picture taken. So Jeanette, I'd like to present you with a plaque for Citizen of the Month, and thank you very much. And parents that are watching, please be involved in the kids' education. Very important.
Congratulations. Yes. Absolutely.
You know, I just wanted to add a word here, because while I was on the Board of School Trustees, Gerheim opened, and I want to say that from its inception, its very inception, it has been a great school, and the method they use of teaching with the model government, with the model city, integrates all subject matter in an interesting, exciting way, and you are so fortunate to have that. I just wanted to say you're great in all of that.
Thank you. Thank you. And I wanna congratulate you, too. I have spent like 37 years in education, and it does go down to each one of you as children to go ahead and have the support of each of you as parents, or an older brother, an uncle, somebody who cares. And if, in fact, all of you continue to participate and continue to learn, if you are the student, I can assure you, the Clark County School District School System will be one of the best in the country, as it has been in the past. So I encourage you, and I congratulate you, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for citing this wonderful group, and parents, you are the best. Hang there. Bring another parent that doesn't participate. Find somebody who's not participating and bring them along with you. We'll succeed in all of this. We're proud of you, and thank you. For our next item, it's my pleasure to present the city's Employee of the Year Award. And for this, I would like to invite our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, up to join us in presenting this award. And I'm pleased to announce that the Citizen, the Employee of the Year is...
What? Oh. The employee, I was like, I'm doing the Citizen of the Month, I'm sorry. I got the wrong memo. I am so proud to announce Helen McLendon. Helen, get up here, please. Our municipal court marshal. I would like to invite Jim Carmini, the court administrator, up, and Judge Cynthia Leong is over there, she's our chief judge, to come up and join me for a minute, so that we can heap accolades on Helen. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that Jim will wanna chime in here a little bit, but what many of you may or may not know is that we've been dealing with a little bit of a recession for the last couple of years. Shocking, right? And many of our employees have gone the extra mile in identifying different ways to help us bring in revenue that's due to us, that people actually owed us, in the way they do their jobs. And in the court, their focus is really bringing people to justice, and making sure that if they've done something wrong, that they live up to the expectations the judges have set. And Helen is one of a team of about 17 marshals, I believe, that make sure that the judges stay safe, and that the courtroom stays secure, but they also make sure that people live up to their obligations when a judge says you're gonna do something, that they do it. And Helen is top-notch in making sure that happens. So not only does she do her job well with her whole team of fellow employees, Helen went above and beyond and created what we call a warrant window that helps all of the individuals, all the clerks at the front desk of the court, as they're dealing with defendants who walk in and wanna take care of what it is that they owe, and wanna make sure that they're back in good standing in our community. She takes care of them, and she does it with respect and professionalism. And because of Helen's creative idea of creating this warrant window, I believe, Helen, it was around $750,000 you brought in this year as a result of that? So, just a... Okay. So Helen has done a fantastic job, and this is a shining example of the creativity that an employee brings when we all are working together to resolve some very difficult situations. And Helen has just done a fantastic job. So Helen, thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and I believe the judge would like to say something, too.
Fine, thank you. Thank you. First of all, because you students are here, I want our wonderful Helen to please, would you step closer to the railing there and make a turn, so they can see. It's very scary from the backside. As gorgeous as this lady is, you don't mess with her. Could you tell our students what all these different pieces are? Please.
Right on the side here is my ammunition. I carry my ammo. This is one side, my weapon. I have two. The whole fifteen. Down here is my taser. This is my taser that I carry on my belt also. And as you go around my belt here, you have my handcuffs. My radio, and in my handcuffs, two pairs of handcuffs. I have one, catch the bad guys, and put them in handcuffs. As I go around, I have my mate. Okay, this is the spray. I use to spray the trees when I need to tackle them.
So let me tell you all, students, this is a job, but this is a lady not to be messed with, and she is not only gonna be Employee of the Year, we're gonna keep her for the century. I think here's something sensational, and I am so proud. And I just wanna read a few things that were so nicely given to me before I turn them back over to our city manager. Helen is a municipal court marshal and has been with the city since May of 2000, so it's 11 years. Recently, a problem came to light with some municipal court defendants violating judicial orders, continually going in and out of warrant status. In some instances, they were only paying the minimum amount due and were dragging their cases on for years. Helen drafted a proposal to set up the warrant window, which Ms. Fretwell just spoke to, at the municipal court specifically to address the problem. The window is manned by a clerk and a marshal, so that this team can work with defendants who don't meet their obligations to the court. Helen uses a combination of authority and positive solution-based approach to help defendants in the warrant status identify methods to meet their obligations, pay their bills. For example, one defendant explained that he had a hard time managing his money, and by the time he got around to paying his court fine, his paycheck was already spent. Helen suggested that he have a money order made out to the court at the same time he cashed his check. Brilliant. The warrant window program has now been in operation since October of 2010, and it is stopping the cycle of minimum compliance that some defendants have moved, been mired into. Helen's work has resulted in 5,241 warrants being cleared, and more than 728,000 in revenue being collected by the city. Helen's enthusiasm and ingenuity have improved the court's efficiency and our customer service. Helen was the February Employee of the Month earlier this year, which made her eligible for this honor. And so on behalf of our city manager and the entire city council, we would like to congratulate Helen on being named this all-important Employee of the Year/Century. I wanna present you with this plaque, as well as a beautiful award, and I am going to turn this back to you, if we may do this first. And it says, and it is gorgeous. Oscar always told me he tore up all the awards he ever got, but this one is a beauty. Isn't that gorgeous? And it says, Employee of the Year Outstanding City Employee Award Presented to Helen McLendon, July 2011, 2010-2011, signed by all the city council. And we congratulate you. Well deserved. And look at that smile. Wouldn't you pay your warrants, all of you? And why don't you do that? And then you can hand it on, too.
Great. Helen, we also have this other memento that you can put up, so that all of your fellow employees can check it out. A beautiful little statue there with your name engraved on it, saying that you're the Employee of the Year for 2011, so congratulations. We had a little celebration at the court last week, and let me tell you, we really got Helen. It's hard to keep things a secret in City Hall, but for some reason, we can keep Employee of the Month and Employee of the Year secret. So when she walked in the door, she was shocked. At that ceremony, we gave her a variety of other things that go along with this award, including a $500 check, and Super PON will be making a donation to a charity of her choice in a similar amount, and Helen's already told me that she wants to go to Ruth Chris, and I'm buying, and she wants to bring friends. So we're really looking forward to this, and Helen's just done a great job, and I know that Jim and the judge would like to say a couple of words about her, so I'll turn it over to Judge Leong.
Thank you. Mayor Goodman, councilwoman and councilman, good morning. Helen, wow, what can I say? We are so proud of you. On behalf of Las Vegas Municipal Court and all the judges, it is an honor to work with you. You came up with this innovative idea, I know we've talked about it before, but it is huge. We have a consistent problem in the court with warrant compliance, court compliance. You came up with this great idea, you implemented it, and you continue with the rest of the team to make it work efficiently. So not just congratulations, but thank you. I hope you feel all the love and support here, 'cause there's some folks I wanna just briefly acknowledge who came here to support you and recognize you on this day. I see, of course, Judge Brown from Municipal Court. I see Judge Bacham in the audience, as well as Judge Baer, and I know they had the pleasure and honor of working with you, and if that's not testimony to your integrity, that they are here also to recognize you, I think you should really feel proud. You are our Employee of the Year, and again, it is an honor to work with you. Congratulations. Would you like something?
I think we're done, unless Jim...
No, no, that's fine.
Sure?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Well, no, I do want... How can I, how can I not? The other issue is, there's four rows of employees over there to thank you. Couple of things that didn't get mentioned. Helen's, in her job as marshal in traffic court and at the warrant window, touches the lives of some 600 to 700 people a week who come into our court, either to go to traffic court or to take care of business at the warrant window. For those of you who are here from school, a lesson, Helen came up with the idea of the warrant window, and I basically initially said, "No." I didn't think it was a good idea, in my ultimate wisdom. She went down to the front counter, and she proved that the warrant window was a good idea, and she kept telling me, "We can do this, and we can make it work," and it's because of that kind of work that the people at the court do, the reason we're so successful with the people that we see. And Helen, I commend you. You're the best of the best. It's a pleasure to work with you.
But first, is Karen Coyne here, our deputy safety? Did you wanna come up and say, you're sure you're cool?
Congratulations, Helen.
That's it. Shy and retiring city employees, love it. Go for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone kept asking me, did I have a speech prepared? Yes, I do have a speech prepared. So I wanna say good morning, and thank you, Mayor Goodman, and the city council, for recognizing me as Employee of the Year. Thank you very much. So I would like to thank God for allowing this to happen. Without him, none of this would be possible. I would also like to thank my family and friends, and special thanks to my God-son Elias, who I love dearly, my friends, my good friends, Tracy and LaShala, along with Aleah. For a quick moment, I would like to thank some people who have been working with me since the beginning of the warrant window of August 2010. The marshal unit, I love all my marshals, okay? And special thanks to Marshal Alicia Martino, Martino, and David Reyes, Mr. Carmini, the court administrator, Pam Jefferson, ASD Division Manager, all of the municipal court judges, and Justice of the Peace Susan Bacham, my lieutenant, Jack Manning, who is not here with me today, but he's on vacation, Sergeant Chad Romero, Sergeant Bryant Wacoviat, the warrant window clerk, Rashonda and Elena, traffic court clerk Cheryl Candace Centoya, muni court front-counter clerks, and the fourth-floor ASAC clerks, and finally, the entire municipal court family. I wanna thank you for everything, and for everyone helping me accomplish this great deed. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Want a picture? Or we have, don't have the photography here?
Some pictures outside, unless you would like one of the council.
Okay. I think that would be, okay. Over on the left, or are we gonna do it from front? From the left?
This would be great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Sorry, it's a radio. It was off. Thank you, and congratulations. The final item, Councilman Ross is going to recognize a pair of high school students who have really made a splash with their creativity. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, and thank you all for being here today. I have to share this with you. I've been known to be a little bit peculiar at times in my life from my friends, and I don't know if that's my lifetime in the Boy Scouts, or my mother's passion for provident living. Several weeks ago, the news ran a story of a couple of students who happened to be students in high schools out in the Northwest, and the news just did not do this justice. There are two students that are so creative and so talented, I have to introduce them to you today, because the news didn't do a good enough job, and I want all of Las Vegas to see who these kids are. Can we bring in John Corrilli from Northwest Career Technical Academy, and Lisa Brown from Centennial High School? And as they're walking in, we get the camera directed over there. I want you to take a look at these students and what they're wearing. They're moving slowly, and I'll tell you why. A little bit of mood music in the background? Yeah, you want me to sing? I'll sing a Spanish lullaby as they come in now. This is John and Lisa, and I will tell you what they've done, as you can tell from these extraordinary outfits that they're wearing. Centennial High School competed, I mean, Lisa and John participated in a competition that was actually Northwest Career and Technical Academy. Am I correct, John? It was an international scholarship competition called Stuck at Prom. And as you can tell, they're stuck. This contest was sponsored by the Duck Brands Company, which manufactures duct tape. The rules were simple. Make formal outfits for you and your date out of duct tape, and wear them to prom. John and Lisa did just that. Using 64 rolls of duct tape, they constructed a dress, a tuxedo patterned after Spanish flamenco dancers. Over a period of four months, they stuck together pants, skirts, jacket, cape, et cetera. And if you get a chance, I want you to take a look at the detail in this young lady's earrings, and her headdress there, and everything that John's done also. Let's see, they decorated them with scrollwork and over 300 duct taped flowers. They wore the outfits at Northwest Career and Technical Academy's prom, held at the Paiute Resort on May 14, and their efforts really paid off, when they were chosen out of hundreds of entrants throughout the United States and Canada to be one of the top 10 finalist couples competing for college scholarship money. On July 13, John and Lisa took third place in the competition, and they each received $2,000 in scholarship money. And John, I think you got two... Over a period of four months, they stuck together pants, skirts, jacket, cape, et cetera. And if you get a chance, I want you to take a look at the detail in this young lady's earrings, and her headdress there, and everything that John's done also. Let's see, they decorated them with scrollwork and over 300 duct taped flowers. They wore the outfits at Northwest Career Technical Academy's prom, held at the Paiute Resort on May 14th, and their efforts really paid off, when they were chosen out of hundreds of entrants throughout the United States and Canada to be one of the top 10 finalist couples competing for college scholarship money. On July 13th, John and Lisa took third place in the competition, and they each received $2,000 in scholarship money. And John, I think you got $2,000 for school, too, from Northwest Technical Academy. The creativity these students have shown is amazing. Please help me in recognizing John Corrilli and Lisa Brown for their very talented efforts. Amazing. Now, am I right? I mean, the news just didn't do justice to this, and I want all of you to take a good look at this. So David, I hope the camera's zooming in on these two? Good, because they are absolutely fabulous. This dress is incredible. Now, did John make all these flowers?
It was more his mom who made most of them. But we all, we all did a lot of it.
John's got some explaining to do. It's your turn, buddy. Tell us about how this project went for you.
Well, we started this project really my freshman year, when my sister went to college. And she told, saw that this was an actual scholarship, and she told me about it, and I was like, "Hey, I think I can do that." So from there, I started practicing. I have several duct taped clothes at home besides this. Yes, I'm weird, I know. And from there, we found Lisa, who made duct taped purses before all of this, and it just snowballed into what you see today from there.
Look at that. Look at that.
I also have to tell you, since I'm standing behind and looking at the two of them, first of all, John's shoes, I don't know if you can lift up a leg?
No, I can't.
He can't? Of course, because his knee would stick to his chest. This entire necklace is duct taped. His bow tie, everything. Are your shoes also? Oh my goodness. Covered duct taped, but with the little bows on it. It is simply phenomenal. And that purse, I just, I can't believe it. The necklace, the hairdo, it is simply awesome.
Wow. Now, I think a question, I took him upstairs to the mayor's office, I think a question all the city staff on the 10th floor was asking, "Did you actually dance in this costume?"
We attempted to. It was more just kind of stepping side to side, but sorta.
Lisa, you're still, you're still going to Centennial.
Yes.
John has graduated, of course, and now he's off to be one of the top chefs here in Las Vegas. So I'm going to turn a few minutes over to you to tell us about your experience with this, and you can tell on John a little more if you want to.
Well, we started out with the basics, and it was a lot of effort. We didn't think it would be a lot, but it really came together. And once it was all together, we were like, "Okay, it was worth it." But then at prom, it was, everyone just came and wanted to take a picture. And we had his sister's boyfriend, I believe, was taking a bunch of pictures, and everyone was like, "Do you have paparazzi?" And we're like, "No." But so there's at least 50 people that I don't know who have pictures of it, so, but it was really great.
Awesome. Give them a round of applause again. Now Moms, Moms, stand up to, to be recognized to. Got to get you on TV. And Michael, you got to stand up too. You're the support staff, buddy. You're the support team. Now, as you're looking at these costumes, they are literally duct taped in. I mean, and the only way, how do you get this off? Do you have a pair of scissors?
More or less. There are a couple of spots where you can pull the duct tape off and squeeze out.
Okay, okay. I have a suggestion for more scholarship money. If you go down to Las Vegas Boulevard and just hang out in front of perhaps the Bellagio, you may be able to raise a few more dollars for scholarship money. On behalf of the city of Las Vegas, I want to present this certificate of accomplishment from the mayor and the city council to both of you, and also some other goodies that the council has provided to give you. And Mayor, I don't think you're done yet, are we? Oh, I'll let you do the honors then.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. I don't know if anybody could ever see them if you stay in these outfits, but we have the wonderful Las Vegas blinking light, which is special, and I can't separate the batteries, one for each of you as you travel around, and you represent us so well, we're so thrilled. And many years ago, my husband, in one of his modest days, decided to create a coin that was reflective of what's on the casino tables, and they're black coins with his likeness on the front. They are $100 coins. He said, when I decided I was going to run for the office, he said, "You have to up me one." So these are $1,000 coins. They're good luck, good health. They represent the city that is so proud of you. You can't cash them. Or if you can, let me know, I've got boxes. Boxes. And they come with our appreciation and our admiration for you. Going into sophomore year, so we have to see what she's going to do next year, but I guarantee you with this creativity, you are going to be some fine chef. So let us know, but open business in the city. Remember that. Always in the city. Congratulations. Thank you. So we're going to take one or two minutes to get ourselves back up there, and then we'll be right back. So enjoy yourselves, and congratulations. Anybody who wants a picture, okay? Thank you. Excuse me, how does this go off? Do you know how it turns off?
We just hand it back to the mayor.
I want to take that, Jason, I have that.
And, yeah.
I'm sure that, well certainly hoping to be a state.
Hang on, I'll give them back to you.
Okay, go show off, everybody.
That's just incredible.
That's amazing. How long did it take you?
Four months.
Four months?
I was thinking years.
Really? Both of you, both of you?
Yeah.
Other than your mom who helped?
Yeah.
A bunch of people just home.
Yeah, they even need to throw the money.
Now, the shoes, you have shoes that you could have taken over.
These are all duct taped.
Only got the very several.
How do you, how do you get them out of there?
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's a, that, that you can pull, but basically.
Well, so when you went to the prom, you made sure you hadn't drank any water. It'd be hard to get those glasses on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You have to sip water and keep your body put a little bit, and you can't do a lot of it.
That's amazing. Well, best, too. And good luck on your career.
I know, I asked him, I said, "You must be supposed to go to the prom," and he said, "You don't." He said, "You sip water."
Yeah, exactly.
I think you're going to a prom, that would be tough.
I think we're done here.
All right, you guys, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
No, it's all for my shit.
Everything's good, we're on our way, so I have some ideas in there for us.
Cancer, cancer.
But do you have fun?
You know what? It's not, it's gonna be a holler.
Yeah, good, in the next six months.
Good idea.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
please sit down, that would be nice. Thank you. We're ready to roll up here. Except somebody's on a private bet-making phone call. All right, we're ready to go. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed may be limited. So at this point, we're going to do it without limit, but if need be, we will then limit. So please.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On items number 19, 20, and 30, I'm kind of interested on why we're taking action on county items. And on item number 37, I'd like to know more about the Outside Las Vegas Foundation. I've never heard of them. It sounds like they do a lot of good work. On item number 23, I'd like to take a moment to mention this. The Union Pacific Railroad does an enormous amount of good work that they never get credit for, and I just, I'm just up here just to let people know of that.
Thank you.
My name is Harge, 123 Sir David.
Can you just do that into the mic, please? I missed it on the way.
My name is Harge, and I live 123 Sir David. Mayor, last time I was here, I kind of, you kind of threw me under the bus, but ain't no problem. We get that straightened out today.
You survived well.
Well, the name of the game is, the other guy had four and a half minutes, and I got left by the minute and a half, y'all shot me out there like a cannon. It don't matter. Because see, I come here and talk about things that mean everything to all of us in our entire nation, and all the guy got thrown under the bus. But that's all I want to say. Today, I want to rerepresent it, but I want that picture to show up on the monitor, and I want to see it myself on the mon, and see it on the monitor, and I know the people got it. Thank you.
See, it had to do with the filming crew. It had nothing to do with your city council.
Stanley Washington, Las Vegas, Your Honor.
How are you?
Thank you, counsel. I want to go ahead and give the council a brief update and the status on where we are in the resolution process for opening doors. I'm proud to report that I have here a copy of the resolution, signed by Susan Brager, Chair of the County Commission for the Opening Doors. We also have received approval from the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, of which I want to go ahead and thank Councilman Wilson and Councilman Coffin for their support for that resolution. They're on right track. I hope they are setting an example for this particular body, for the resolution to come from here. Councilman Tarkanyan, I know that your office has been working on that. I'd like to know where we are in terms of moving that forward. I know that I wanted to go ahead and make sure that I brought the county and the Regional Planning Coalition, which you know consists of all the cities coming together here, so we now have good momentum. I understand from Chairman Barnhart, the Gaming Commission's working on their resolution. And so I'll be making my way to North Las Vegas tonight to seek them. I missed Henderson last night, but I'm working with Councilman Bouteen very closely, as she has a keen interest. So I do want to go ahead and bring that report that we are moving forward. Things are looking good on that front. I also want to go ahead and talk about the workshop, the upcoming workshop that is being planned as a result of the lack of awareness for opening doors. I'm working with Tyrone Thompson, formerly of the city, now with the county. We're looking at having it first part of September, looking for a location now. It will be a workshop where all cities, all bodies, all entities will be invited, as the plan calls for all 300 million Americans to be in, so therefore, there's no one left out. So we're looking at cross-the-board participation there, so we can begin to go ahead and have Nevada know about it, implement it, and then we can be about the business of leading the nation on that. I also want to go ahead and say that when our fine governor, Sandeep Al, returns from Iraq, visiting the troops there, showing his concern, I'll be with him to make sure he shows just as much concern when they come back here. Because when they go out there, that's one thing, but when they come back here, they need just as much support as they do when they go out there, and that support needs to be increased. And lastly, as the majority of the homelessness takes place in Ward 5, I believe that there's no better place for the leadership for the salvation and the solving of that to come out of Ward 5, and I will continue to go ahead and make sure that Las Vegas is at the lead of this particular federal strategic plan, and that we are the first to go ahead and get the job done. Thank you. Now, Councilman Tarkanyan, where are we at on our resolution?
Yes, Etsy, remember, I passed that on to you, and you were going to see if we could have it done. It is a beautiful resolution.
We do have it, Councilwoman, in drafting in the city attorney's office, so it'll probably be on either your next council agenda or the subsequent one. So it's underway and should be on an agenda. I think it might even be on the next agenda.
Okay, that's where we are, so we're almost ready for completion.
Thank you very much. Let me give a copy of the county one to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. You're obviously a very involved, caring, and doing citizen. We appreciate it.
Well, I think it's a very important piece that those people put their lives on the line. We don't think about it until we have a problem. But there's big problems here, and we owe them, and we're going to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All comments made under this item for specific action will cross-reference to those items. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please come forward.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mike Brown, Sestero, 1411 South 9th Street. Regarding later today, you're going to be, item number 39, I believe, considering a motion that will also involve the suspension of term limits for planning commission members. I sent all of the council and the mayor earlier this week an email with my thoughts on it, and I received some responses from council members. And I thank you for those of you who replied. And Mr. Barlow, I will, since this is kind of generated from your end of the table, I'll direct my thoughts about the responses I got towards you. And, but please know, council members, that some of the points I'll be addressing didn't necessarily come from Mr. Barlow, just as a respect, I'll direct it to him.
It was a very well-written email, I must say.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I think I banged that out about 11:30 at night. One council member wrote back and said that the value of the planning commission was to handle a lot of the details and the minutiae of development within the city, and get a lot of that logjam handled before it came to council, to help keep council meetings moving. And I appreciate that position. And I would say that that's probably a great synopsis. They also said, however, that this was essentially a non-political position, and therefore, term limits really weren't that important. I'm not sure if it's 100% non-political. I get that it's civic leaders, community leaders, citizens, volunteers. However, since it's by appointment, I think there's at least the, there's a bit of political authority involved there, simply because they're, they're by extension of the council member who supported them and put them in that position. Another council person said, "Well, even if we don't have term limits, we can certainly remove them if they overreach their authority, or abuse the position, or are negligent in their dues." And frankly, I thought that simply waiting until somebody screws up, and then we'll pull them out, kind of sets the bar a little bit low. I think we could set the bar a little bit higher, and encourage people to serve fully and forthrightly the entire length of their term, rather than simply hang back and try not to screw up so they can keep the job. And my third point, and that'll be my last point, I'm happy to engage in conversation, but I know you have a lot of business today. My third point is simply that it's a bit of a slippery slope. If we remove term limits on planning commission members, then there's another commission, and another board, and another commission, and next thing you know, we might not have term limits anywhere. It's a bad precedent to set. I think it's important that people who want to serve, whether it's in an elected position or an appointed position, know that there's a time, whether it's four years, or six years, or 12 years, whatever the case may be, that there's a time when they will move on and vacate that position and open it up for somebody else to serve, so that a fresh perspective and a fresh opinion and... So that a fresh perspective, and a fresh opinion, and a fresh viewpoint can come in. I appreciate that Planning Commission deals with a lot of details, and it's a bit of a technical position, so experience is valuable. But who's to say that the next guy or woman down the street doesn't have better experience? But without term limits, we'll never find out. It'll be the same old folks, making the same old decisions, and we'll have the same old results. If we all like the results we're currently getting, then great, we'll just keep having those results over and over again, and we love them. But if you happen to not like a result, then you won't have much recourse. So, I encourage you to maintain term limits for Planning Commission members, and if you have any questions or comments, I'll be happy to take them.
Thank you, and you did leave your card up there.
Yes, I have a hyphenated last name, so I like to...
Thank you very much.
It's a little tricky to spell at times.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Yes, I had to run out and re-park my car, according to my president, so I'm not exactly sure, but it sounds like we were talking about number 44, and...
Could you give your name, please?
I'm sorry. Juanita Clark, Charleston Neighborhood Preservation.
I think everybody knows you, but for the record, we do that.
Well, no, no, and I apologize for not giving that information. So regarding Item 44, I'll just read what the board has compiled here, and I think it follows the same lines of probably the testimony you've already heard. But Bill Number 2011-31, CNP expressed opposition to the removal of term limits in any government position, especially those acquired by the appointment from an elected official at the 8211 Recommending Committee yesterday, or day morning. All residents have abilities which can serve. The wisdom of providing term limits in a government-appointed position is solid, no matter how honorably intended the proposed reversal. Land value and zoning are two actions having possibly the most monetary effects upon the population, which are key to planning commissioners. No needs to be your vote regarding the removal of term limits to elected City Council and mayor-appointed City of Las Vegas planning commissioners, even though removal may seem justified. Please vote no regarding Bill Number 2011-31. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. Junior Graham, Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. The two previous people just before me has well said what I had in mind to say, and I'd like you to, they should, we should keep the term limits, there should be no, ever, anyway, want the term limits to expand, thank you, expire, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council, great to see you. Suzette LaGrange, 6899 April Wind Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm also here to talk on Item Number 44, the, basically removing term limits from the Planning Commission. I work in the development industry, as many of you guys know, and have some serious concerns about this proposal. There are over 410,000 adults that live in the City of Las Vegas, and I know of hundreds of them that have the capacity to serve on the Planning Commission, and would love the opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission. There are four to five applicants, I can't remember how many I read this morning, but with very experienced credentials that have made application to sit on the Planning Commission, and I would urge you to make those recommendation, or look and consider those applications. Not to say that the, we've got some very talented planning commissioners, there's no doubt, it's a wonderful commission, but I think really eight years to serve your community is long enough. They can take two years off, they can come back and serve additional terms. I think you're really denying the rest of the residents in the City of Las Vegas the opportunity to serve their city, and to serve the residents of their community. One of the arguments was a lack of historical or institutional knowledge. If the Planning Commission were, say, turning over half the members at any given time, and everybody was term-limited out, you would have an argument. Unfortunately, you're rolling planning commissioners, I think about two at a time, I think there's two up for consideration, or subject to this particular bill. So I don't, I don't think that that argument really holds water, when you don't have a significant, a number of people turning over on your council, or on your Planning Commission. Another argument that was said was that it takes, you know, doing away with term limits takes the politics out of it. I can tell you, it seems to me, it puts the politics in it, to an extent that it really sort of frightens me. And I'm in the planning, I'm in the development community, so I understand this a little bit. I want Las Vegas to be a really great place to do business, a really great place to develop. I don't want it to be a good old boys' network, I want developers to know that they can come before the Planning Commission and the City Council, and be heard fair, and appropriately, given the merits of their project. And when you have what is essentially, could potentially be a lifetime appointment to a Planning Commission, I find that just not so on the up and up, and I just don't want that for my city. I'm very, very proud of the city that I live in, and the city that I was raised in. So for that, those many reasons, I urge you to vote no on this ordinance, thank you.
Thank you, and point of clarification, aren't there three, four-year terms on the Planning Commission? 12 years rather than eight?
Two terms.
Two full terms.
We get three, they get two.
They get eight.
Yes, Director Mayor, the members of the council and any legislative body are limited to 12 years or three terms. The Planning Commission by city ordinance are limited to two full terms. So you can have a partial term and two full terms, or just two full terms, but two full terms is the way the city ordinance reads right now.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Brad, just so that I understand what you're talking about, is there a cap on the number of years? If someone begins serving during the term of another commissioner, are they allowed to serve that couple of years plus two full terms?
Good question. If they serve under another member of the council a full term, then they get one more full term. If they serve under another member of council for a partial term, they're still allowed two full terms.
Okay.
Mayor, may I just weigh in for a second? I don't think Item 44 is open for discussion right now, and you guys are getting a lot of clarification in the middle of the public comment. So I'm just, I just thought I would point out that we're gonna have an opportunity later on in the agenda for you guys to ask all these questions when you're considering that item. So I just thought I would mention that.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to Item Number 9, Business Items for Possible Action. Any items from the morning session that the council staff or the applicant wished to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and act upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor, there's one item, Item Number 38. Staff has requested it be stricken, to review of suspension of temporary massage establishment license. Kwan Gue Hu, DBA Ruby Massage and Spa, 2600 West Sahara, Suite 115, and that's my motion.
Vote on the motion, please.
Excuse me, will you repeat that motion?
The motion is to strike that item.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, that's Item Number 38, it was, or is? Post, please. Oh, I saw, because of the withdrawal. Okay, motion carries, thank you very much. Move on to Item 10 for Possible Action to Approve the Final Minutes by Reference of the Regular City Council Meeting of July 6, 2011. Is there a motion to approve those minutes, please?
That's my motion.
Vote on the motion, please. Motion carries, thank you very much. Onto the Consent Agenda, Items 11 through 36, with, there are no exceptions, correct? The one that's being pulled stricken is 38. So Items 11 through 30...
We would like to speak to that, can we speak to some on that, or not?
Give me a moment, please. Okay, I've been advised you're allowed to, but that's why we have the comments up front, to permit you to speak to these items, and not at this time.
All of those things, all right.
But we will allow that this time.
Okay, yes, and I apologize, again, I was not right here, and I was trying to find it. We have, we have a number of questions. Item 17, on this portable hospital, we have, we have questions, because these, this information is just not, does not seem to be available to the public, and it may be, but we weren't resourceful enough maybe to find it. How many companies bid on this portable hospital?
Mayor Goodman, if I may interject.
Please.
And Brad, and just for a point of clarification, being that these items are under consent, can't we ask Ms. Clark which items she would like pulled, that way we can move forward with the consent items that she does not have concern with, and then we can address those items outside of the consent?
That's definitely another way to handle it, if you want to.
I'm just thinking that would be more expedient. And Mayor, of course, that's your choice, I just wanted to throw that in as a recommendation.
Our City Manager on Item 17, can we answer this quickly and move forward?
And we do have some more, so...
Oh, you have more?
I have more, so I would just, I think Councilman Barlow's idea serves us well.
Okay, all right, how many items are there?
Item 17, 18, 24, 36, and 37.
17, 18?
24, 36, and 37. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we'll pull those items, then. 17?
Item 37 is not on the consent agenda.
Item 37 is not on the consent agenda, so it's Items 17, 18, 24, and 36 that will be pulled on this. So if you'd just give us a minute to do that. Okay, so on the rest...
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just, rather than pull it out and have to take another vote, I just wanted to say a couple of sentences about...
Please, go ahead.
Item Number 25, I just wanted to say, I've been watching what's been done through the Citizen, the Senior Citizens Law Project, and I'm so pleased that they are going to have this funding, and I know that we all back that, and as you work more and more with seniors in the community, you see their great need for legal assistance, and oftentimes they don't have the funds to get it otherwise. So it's just saying how wonderful that we have that.
Thank you, certainly concurred in. Okay, may I have a motion on those remaining in the consent agenda, please?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items 11 through 36, except for Items 17, 18, 24, and 36.
And also, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to also pull Item Number 35, and I believe this should be someone from Public Works, is Jorge here? Jorge, you'll be able to handle this? Okay, great.
Okay, so let me repeat this, if I may, Councilman Barlow, we are now pulling 17, 18, 24, 35, and 36, so let's remake the motion, please, including Number 35 on the consent agenda.
Okay, that's my motion.
Will you all please vote on this? Thank you, and post. Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, so now on to administrative number... Okay, we're gonna start with 17. Okay, so on Item Number 17, for Possible Action to Approve the Purchase of an Emergency 20-Bed Portable Hospital and Essential Medical Supplies and Equipment to Be Utilized in the Case of a Catastrophic Event, $182,574.77 FY2008 Federal Metropolitan Medical Response System Grant Program, all wards.
Juanita Clark, representing Charleston Neighborhood Preservation, and we had, we had some questions on the, on the, on this particular item. How many companies bid on this portable hospital?
Your Honor, Council, this Deputy Chief, Robert Bell. In regard to the emergency 20-bed portable hospital, we have a definite need for that hospital in this region, we don't have one in this area, it's completely grant-funded, and it's something that would be needed for, in case of some type of catastrophic or emergency
The question was how, was it funded, and was it open to bid, I guess?
Yes, and we are not speaking against the, against the issue.
Correct, you just are curious.
We concur with the gentleman completely, but we have information questions that we thought the listening audience may be interested in as well.
Maybe I can help here a little bit.
Thank you.
Here's my suggestion. Our purchasing manager is out. Practically everything we do from a commodity to a purchase like this requires competition. I don't know that any of us have the data right now that says how many people bid, or where we are in that bidding process. If you're uncomfortable not having the answer to that, then I would suggest that you hold it for two weeks, because I don't believe we're gonna have that answer for you this morning.
Yes, please, go ahead, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor, as long as Betsy's up here, I think maybe it might be a good idea, at least before we move this off for a couple of weeks, to quickly outline the process in this purchase, and perhaps other purchases, that have been public, that have been available to people that would be interested in these kinds of things. Has it been on the internet, has, it's been posted, I would imagine, et cetera, so please, just quickly...
For something like this, you have specific requirements that you need, I mean, obviously things like it has to have 20 beds, it probably has to have a portability factor, probably has to have storage criteria, and all those things. Those things are typically dropped into a document that's made public. Oftentimes, those documents are then sent out to what I would describe as natural vendors, people who produce those kinds of products, for them to be aware that we want to buy one. In some circumstances, we'll have blanket purchase agreements, where similar items maybe are lumped together, and maybe there was a portable hospital on the list of eligible purchases, that we could then go to that pre-approved list and be able to pick from it, and use that one vendor. So we have a variety of ways, Councilman, to be able to ensure competition, make sure that we're getting what we want in that purchase, and follow through so that there's competition to get the lowest prices. And that happens unless there's a sole source for something like a public facility, or things that are specifically excluded, excluded from our ability to use that by state law. So, I don't know, Mark, did you find anything else?
I think, you know, I do think that answers most of our questions. I'd like to ask, is there any pointed issue to which you're directing this, that has made you wonder about a process that is ongoing through the city and how they operate?
My recommendation is, we just hold it for two weeks, we'll get the answers for you, and then we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion here among the council?
I just have a comment, Mayor. I just comment about the consent agenda. Routine items are on the consent agenda because they're routine items. And I just want to make that comment. I feel perfectly comfortable moving forward with this, Betsy, even though I respect your recommendation, I think there's a need for this, we've got one of our fire chiefs standing up here telling me we need this, this is something important to this community, I hate for something to happen in the next two weeks, where we needed this facility, and we delayed any action in regards to that. So I would, I would move forward with the item. Mayor, that's my thought.
Thank you very much, yes.
I would have to concur with my colleague, Councilman Ross. We've relied on our fire services to go out and do their due diligence in order to make sure that this community has all of the tools needed in order to be safe in our community, and I believe that, at the same time, we have an opportunity to follow back up with the resident who has, you know, any specific questions that outline her concerns, but I don't believe that it's, the questions that I've heard today are stringent enough to basically hold this off two weeks. I believe that we do have an opportunity to just go ahead and move forward, it being that it is agendized as a, the Federal Metropolitan Medical Response System Grant Program. So with it being a grant program, there's many other... So, with it being a grant program, there's many other vendors that have had an opportunity to, um, apply for the grant as well. So, um, I'm in agreeance with my colleague, Councilman Ross, and I too am in favor of moving forward with, um, this item.
I also...
Did you wanna say something?
I, I also wanted to say, if the question is, uh, did we put it out for a request for proposal for competitive bidding? I think that information is important to have. If it's just how many were involved in the competitive, then I think that we could move forward, as our colleagues say, but my concern is the transparency in the fact of, did we put it out for competitive bidding?
Councilwoman, that, that's my concern too. I wanna make sure that we have the answer to that question for you before you take a final action. I completely appreciate Councilman Ross and Councilman Barlow's position on this, and if we had that answer right now, I would agree a hundred percent. We don't have it, um, our, our purchasing manager's not here, and our fire chief's not here, so the people who know the detail behind what we actually did for this purchase are unavailable to answer that question. But I can make sure we have that question answered for you in two weeks, and we'll proceed forward with, with this purchase.
In two weeks isn't...
That would be my, I mean, I don't get to vote, but that would be my preference to make sure we have all our bases covered based on the question.
And Madam President, that, that, because I'm, sorry, I was just finishing whatever.
Yes, please.
Um, that two weeks is not going to do, you know, cause that much of a problem, and basically, it isn't a question of do we want this or not want it. It's a question, do we know for sure that this went through according to what it should go through? And we all make mistakes at some times, so if a citizen asks, I think two weeks isn't too long to obey the item, to just be sure, and also to help our city manager feel comfortable.
Any other comments? I would like to add, I'm having just returned from our FEMA training in Emmitsburg, Maryland, um, and knowing what happened in Norway, granted that was one individual again. It is of great concern to me that we are as prepared as we always can be for any type of emergency man-made or, um, naturally caused, and to me, the fact that it was a grant, um, I would really hate if something should happen in these next two weeks. I would feel quite guilty to this. And knowing and having learned how efficient our team operates, um, while I certainly respect the city manager and would, um, adhere to what the council colleagues would want, um, my preference would be that we are safe and secure first, and then follow up to let you know how it was done, 'cause I have great faith in how the process works in City Hall. It is simply incredible. We have a very efficient team that puts out to bid. So I'm gonna defer to my councilpeople. I certainly respect you and your question there, and I think that is only fair that we put everything out to bid that needs to be in an appropriate manner. So we either have a motion on the floor, um, upon which we will vote.
But, Ma- Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just ask, is this going to be ready in two weeks? I mean, if we're talking about security in the next two weeks, I, doesn't it take some time to get this put together? Is the two weeks going to, I mean, I, I can't see how you could do it in two weeks.
Chief Bell, has it been ordered?
I have a quick, quick, quick comment. If you will trail this to the first item in the afternoon, we will have the answers. We're just not going to be able to get them for you right here, and then you can decide then if you wanna take the action.
Yay for cell, cell technology. Yes?
On this, yes, um, and other, maybe radios, depending on who we need to talk to, but we will get you the answer.
Yeah, just need a little time to get that answer.
Great. And what was the time? That's a very interesting question. What's the timeline on this being up and ready? Has it been ordered?
We have none of those answers this morning. That's why we need some time.
Oh, wonderful.
So that we can figure out where it is in the process.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that needs to be withdrawn, and then just to put it, to trail till after lunch.
If you, if you just trail it to the end of the morning, we'll have plenty of time to go figure this out for you.
Fine, we will do that. We will trail this. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. We'll take that first item after lunch. We are now on to number eighteen, for possible action to approve the acceptance of an award of grant funding for services provided to eligible defendants in specialty courts in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars from the Supreme Court of Nevada Administrative Office of the Courts for the Las Vegas Municipal Court as fiscal agent, all wards.
Yes, Juanita Clark, representing Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. Uh, we have, we have a question, and then we, uh, ha- also ask for an explanation. Uh, number one, um, how is this money apportioned throughout, throughout the state? Is it by eligible population only, or...
City Manager?
Juanita, do you mind repeating that, please? And Jim Carney's on his way up to answer those questions.
All right, thank you, thank you. And, and if we could get these by meeting with him or something, but, uh, but that way, the only people that will hear the answers are, you know, are, are our little group and, and, and not others. Um, okay, number eighteen, um, how is this money apportioned throughout the state? By eligible population only, or...
The, um, the money that we're referring to is money that is collected in the various jurisdictions on what is known as AA fees and specialty court fees. When a defendant receives some sort of a citation, as part of the payment of that citation, there are some fees. Some of those fees inure to the state. They're administered by this US, uh, by the State Supreme Court, and we, we run a number of specialty courts. We run a youth drug court, a DUI court, a Wynn Court for women in need who are, are on the street in prostitution, um, and, what's the other one, Beverly? Yoke Court, yeah, which is a youth court. We make application to the Supreme Court for some, some fees, which we've already sent, to come back to support those specialty courts. It is not appropriated according to population.
The eligible population.
But it, but it is according to what we have. Some courts don't have any specialty courts. Others, like we and the District Court, have a number of specialty courts. So, um, the Supreme Court reviews all applications with their staff and then awards grants to the various courts based on the amount of money they have and who has applied. It's a competitive type of arrangement, but it's not, there's no formula for awarding the grant based on population.
Okay, we, we were just, we were thinking also about the possibility that sometimes at the state legislature, uh, some of these funds get, um, you know, there's, there's, there's a, there's a hassle over, over who gets those, and so, and so we, we were curious about that. And then, and then, um, maybe you already did this, please share at least four ways a defendant may be eligible.
Four, for, um, uh, eligible for the specialty courts?
Uh, well, it, it, it said that this, this money was apportioned throughout the states by eligible population, and so...
There are various, various defendants identified. Someone who's arrested in this city on a, driving under the influence, may in fact be eligible for the DUI specialty court, at which time we address the behavior and make every attempt to stop that behavior from occurring again. The same thing with youth drug courts, uh, with the women in need of supervision. Uh, all of those are people who are identified that come to our courts with specific needs that we can address through these specialty courts. They're highly successful, and they have a very, very, uh, good success rate in terms of keeping people from repeating those offenses.
Thank you, thank you, yes. As, as been stated already, I think the city functions beautifully and, and dynamically and specifically, and, and yet, sometimes it's helpful to know about those things.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carney, also have a motion.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Juanita? Juanita? Can you hear me? Why don't we, uh, why don't we try something? 'Cause I know you pay attention to our agenda, and I appreciate that, and you have questions. If you could, if you could fax me your questions on Monday before the city council meeting to me, then I will make sure somebody returns a phone call answering those questions for you before the meeting, so you have that information. Can we do that? And then if you have any further questions at the city council meeting, you can do that, but I think we can answer a lot of them before the meeting.
Uh, that has been, that has been suggested to us, and actually, we tried that once, and, um, and, and, and it didn't work in the manner that we thought it was supposed to, and, and it's very, very challenging for us to have that ready for you to Monday. We have, we have other things to do, the same as, as we all do, you know?
Why don't we try it?
It's, um...
Why don't we try it and see what happens? Okay. All right, well, well, if you wanna do that, we can do that, so...
We, we will make another attempt. It's just very, very challenging.
Okay, anyway, my motion is to approve item number eighteen.
Please, uh, vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item number, item number twenty-four, for possible action to approve receipt of the annual Older Americans Act Title III-B grant funds in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven twenty-two special revenue through the state and Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Aging and Disability Services Division for Senior Citizens Law Project, SCLP, to provide legal services to senior citizens sixty years of age and older, all wards.
Uh, good morning, Mayor, Council.
Mrs. Vogel.
Sugar Vogel, Administrator of the Senior Citizens Law Project. This grant is an annual grant that has been awarded to the Senior Citizens Law Project beginning with nineteen seventy-six. This is our grandfather grant. Um, the Nevada State Agency was formerly referred to as the Division of Aging Services, now known as the Aging and Disability Services. Uh, we use these grant monies to assist our program in providing free legal services to anyone who is a Clark County resident who is sixty years or older. That may include helping people with preparing, uh, uh, their wills, or helping people prepare advance directives who are facing catastrophic illnesses. We have an active outreach program. We assist in public entitlements. We assist in preserving assets. Uh, lately, we've been assisting many seniors in foreclosure prevention, and this is our grandfather grant, and we're requesting approval. This would be our thirty-second year in receiving this annual grant. I'll be glad to answer any questions that there are.
And this was the project that I mentioned from twenty-five, the senior law project that I think is so important.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Any comments?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes, please, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sugar, this isn't near enough money for what you guys do, and I just want you to know how I feel about what you do for the citizens who live in this city. Your services are invaluable to those who cannot provide for themselves, and I want you to know I personally thank you and your staff for all that you do for Las Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman, thank you. I appreciate that. We appreciate the support. It's always been our mission to provide legal services, and beginning with respecting our elders. Everybody has parents, and we appreciate all the support we've received from the city of Las Vegas since nineteen seventy-eight and accomplished a mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comments here, please.
Yes, um, Juanita Clark, on behalf of Charleston Neighborhood Preservation, will pose one question. How many individuals utilized this one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars?
We assert, we serve approximately twenty-three hundred individuals aged sixty years and older on an annual basis, and I do wanna comment that if somebody comes to our office, for example, and needs to have a will prepared, they also receive multiple services. So they may come to us if they want a will, but they also may have a bankruptcy question or a consumer question. So for those twenty-four hundred senior citizens that visit us on an annual basis, we probably provide over ten thousand legal free services to them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Goodman, please. Since we're touting the Senior Citizen Law Project, just for clarification, you don't have to be a city resident to take advantage of your, uh, agency, do you?
No, Councilwoman, you don't. Our grant is written so that any senior citizen, you only have to be sixty years or older, so...
Do you have to be a Nevada resident?
You must be a Clark County resident. So we serve the city of Las Vegas, Clark County, and we serve rural Clark County with these monies. So anybody sixty years or older, regardless of means, is eligible to contact our office for free legal services.
The Councilman already answered mine. You cover the entire county?
Yes, we do, the entire county of Clark.
Because there's a lot of, a great, great deal of the senior citizens live in the county?
Yes, we do, and we also have launched a pilot program with these monies specifically to serve rural Clark County, so we also visit seniors in Laughlin, Mesquite, Overton, etc.
Yeah, senior citizens are part of my, my specialty, so thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve item twenty-four.
All, um, may I have a vote, please, on item number twenty-four to approve? Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow had asked, um, item, agenda item number thirty-five, for possible action to approve a supplemental inter-local contract number six dash four eight one F between the city of Las Vegas and the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada RTC, to extend the project completion date to January thirty-one, two thousand and twelve for City Parkway, D Street Connector. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, I would like for, uh, the Director of Public Works, Jorge Salvantes, to give a brief update and also explanation of, of this item.
Certainly. Good, good morning. Jorge said about this at Department of Public Works. This item is a, uh, amendment to the completion date for the funding agreement of the project. The construction was completed over a year ago. However, we don't close out the funding contract until all bills have been submitted, the one-year warranty period on the construction expired, and all the paperwork's been done. So the construction's been over for over a year. This is just the extension to the funding agreement with the RTC for the project.
And I appreciate that, and so with that, Mayor Council, um, I would like to move forward, uh, to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item number thirty-six. R thirty-one, two oh one one, for possible action to approve a resolution awarding bid for special improvement, district number one five one nine sidewalk infill, Oki Boulevard, west of Rancho Drive, and Eleventh Street north of Charleston, eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars, twenty-two cents, Capital Projects Fund Special Assessments, wards one and three. Councilwoman Tarkanian and Councilman Coffin?
I have a question.
Please.
Thank you, uh, Madam, uh, excuse me, Your Honor, Madam Mayor, whatever. I wanna make sure I don't mess that up. I, I wanted to just ask you, um, in the description, Oki Boulevard, west of Rancho, and Eleventh Street, north of Charleston. Is it, is it on Eleventh from Oki to some other street? This is confusing, because, um, generally speaking, this would be south of Charleston, so I'm a little confused about what you're talking about there.
Yeah, for the record, Jorge said, well, it's Department of Public Works. Uh, Councilman, this is in front of one individual parcel. We had two residents that came forward asking for a special improvement district to be created for construction work in front of their homes, so each one of us, one property, one on Oki and one on Eleventh Street.
Thank you. Comments, please.
Questions again. Juanita Clark, on behalf of Charleston Neighborhood Preservation, um, what will be the total cost of improvements in this area? Because we know there's kind of ongoing.
Under this project, the total cost is eight, eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents.
And, um, last, are union wages being paid for this area's, area's improvements?
Because it is a Public Works project, it's required that prevailing wages are paid.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I would entertain a motion, please.
I would, if, with, uh, uh, Councilman Coffin, if you're in agreement, I would move to approve. So I move to approve.
Thank you. Vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're back on our agenda. We are on item number thirty-seven, discussion for possible action regarding an agreement with the Outside Las Vegas Foundation for the purpose of developing a citizen engagement campaign and an adopted trail program for the city of Las Vegas Trail System, fifty-five thousand green building special reserve fund, all wards.
Uh, good ma- good morning, Mayor and Council. Tom Perrigo, Administrative Services. Um, I'm happy here today to present this, uh, this project and introduce Mauricio Baca, who's the Executive Director of Outside Las Vegas Foundation, and Tom Morden, who's the Chair of the Board of Trustees, uh, for Outside Las Vegas Foundation, and they're gonna tell us a little bit more about the program.
Welcome to you. This is exciting, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Tom Morden, ten thousand, eight oh one, um, West Charleston. And just for the record, I'd like to point out that I am, uh, not, uh, wearing any articles of clothing made out of duct tape today. We appreciate your, yeah, we appreciate your consideration today for this, um, item, and, uh, I would say that the Outside Las Vegas Foundation has been... and, uh, I would say that the Outside Las Vegas Foundation has been around for, uh, more than a decade, and it originally was, uh, started out with a mission to connect the people of Las Vegas with recreational opportunities, outdoors, and especially the areas, uh, around the outside of the valley, the federal lands. It has evolved over the years, and, uh, I cannot think of a better way to connect community than trail systems. In my day job, I worked for Howard Hughes, and, uh, in developing Summerlin, we know that the residents of Summerlin, they'll tell you that trails are the number-one amenity bar none. It's also the most-used amenity, and we think the reason is because it's more than just the positive aspects of getting outside, getting exercise, uh, fighting childhood obesity. It's also a social connector. It, it binds communities and neighborhoods and neighbors by getting them out there, walking, rollerblading, pushing baby strollers, whatever it is, they're interacting. And so we think this is a wonderful opportunity to pull community together, and Outside Las Vegas is a good opportunity, um, is a, is a good organization to take this on. This person next to me is the brains and the, um, and the visionary of our organization, and I'd like Mauricio to talk a little bit, if I could.
Wonderful. Welcome. And you stay thin, because you bike so much. It's wonderful.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Mauricio Baca, Executive Director of the Outside Las Vegas Foundation, twelve forty-eight Emerald Crest Street is my address. Thank you so much, Tom, and Tom Morden and Tom Perrigo, and thank you to the City Council for considering this matter. The Outside Las Vegas Foundation was instrumental in working with this City Council and with other city councils in two thousand and seven to bring together the Open Space and Trail Summit. At that summit, all of the entities came together and committed to establishing and increasing the trails and open space in this valley, and there's been phenomenal success. We have tremendous additions to these wonderful amenities that are literally and figuratively linking our communities together. Now that we have these amenities, however, what we need to do is bring our communities into caring for and stewarding these amenities. So that's what this is about. This is about reaching out to the communities, the local businesses, and bringing them on as sponsors to adopt the trails, reaching out to the citizens of those communities, and bringing them in as volunteers, um, and really creating a community ethic of stewardship and long-term stewardship. This program would enable the Outside Las Vegas Foundation to bring on a community outreach coordinator and volunteer coordinator, and our long-term goal is to make this program an entirely self-sustaining program, so that this will provide the seed money, but then we will go out to the communities, work with our local businesses, and bring them on as sponsors for this program. The entire goal, really, the long-term goal, is to have the communities truly and effectively adopt these trails and take them on in terms of a long-term stewardship objective.
It's wonderful. Where and how do our citizens who are watching, or maybe watching a replay, one, get involved and volunteer, and, two, what is the size of adopted trail contribution and for how much of the trail?
Well, at this point, actually, we're, what we'll, what we'll be doing is we'll be working with the city staff to develop this program for the first two to three months, because this is a brand-new program. We're going to be working to, um, uh, lay out the foundation for it. Uh, we're looking at probably, uh, an upper level of twenty-five hundred dollars for businesses in terms of sponsoring this adopted trail program, but we're still going, working out the details of that. What we'd like to do is make sure that we go through this in a very methodical way, lay out a volunteer handbook, lay out all the different, um, guidelines and objectives so that when people come on as volunteers, they know exactly what they're getting into. Um, we want to lay this out for a long-term foundation so that this program is going for ten years, twenty years, thirty years, forty years, that, using the first three to four months of the program to really lay that foundation and then move forward with that. For folks who are interested in getting involved, once we have that foundation set, um, they can contact me at the Outside Las Vegas Foundation. My email is MBACA@outsideLasVegas.org. Um, you're also welcome to call me at seven zero two, um, seven one five zero two two six, and I'll be happy to plug you into this program. Um, we're going to be bringing on a volunteer community, uh, volunteer, um, uh, Community Outreach Director and Volunteer Coordinator, a young lady named Ray Lathrow, who's in the audience here, who'll be getting with, will be beginning with us on August fifteenth, and she will help us to shape and move forward this program.
Your website is launched?
Uh, the website is launched, yes. The website's been up for, for a while, and we're actually in the process of doing some additional things with our website, such as a trail locator for our citizens, because we want to make sure that people know where things are. Once people know where they are and they're using them, then we need to take care of them, of course. So that's, that's that whole cycle that we're talking about here. And if there are any further questions, I'm obviously happy to answer any questions that the City Council might have about this program.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Mayor, with your permission, um, when do you need the mayor and the council out hiking the trails to kind of give you the oomph that you need?
Uh, we're actually going to be meeting with council staff tomorrow and talking about a, a way to launch this program, so we're probably looking at an event in September to launch this program. Thank you.
Mayor Goodman?
Thank you so much for that expression of interest.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you. I'm going to start off by saying I have a bias and a prejudice, and it's an admitted bias, because, uh, I represent Ward Two, and Ward Two certainly has the best trails in the entire city, and Tom Morden, I'm sure you would agree with me.
I wouldn't argue with that.
Okay. Uh, I, I love this program. I think it's a phenomenal program. I think it's a great opportunity. I like the title, Citizen Engagement, but you both used the word volunteerism throughout your presentation, and that's what it is. It's getting people that want to volunteer their time to help, uh, better the community. Uh, does the program also involve trailheads? I'm sure it does.
It will address trailheads as well to, to some extent. Um, we're, we'll, we'll have a series of different efforts that will be part of this program. For instance, there'll be things like condition assessment, you know, a very baseline element where city workers are not able to go out to all the trails and assess the conditions. So we'll be able to get volunteers to go out and assess conditions at trailheads and along the trails. Um, we'll be able to do some very basic trail maintenance function. Um, we won't be doing any of the heavier lifting of trails, trails maintenance, however.
Okay, because there's an excellent, pretty new trailhead at Alta and Walupi, and it starts right there on Walupi and then goes east, and it goes into the desert. And I think that the, the maintenance and making sure that the litter's picked up, et cetera, is very important. Would you please include me in your plans? Because I've been involved with, uh, community cleanups through Tom before, and I just think this is a wonderful program, and I'm excited to get as many volunteers to join your program as possible.
Thank you so much. We're more than pleased to include you in our plans. Yes, and I, I also want to say that we're going to begin this program with, uh, some pilot trails. We don't want to try and bite off a chunk that's larger than we can chew to start with, so we're not going to do every single city trail to begin with. We'll select some pilot trails, then we can also do some assessment as to the effectiveness of the program, and then as we move along, we're going to expand this program. And in many ways, I see this as a vanguard for, um, something that could expand to a lo, an area larger than the City of Las Vegas. Um, as we know, the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act was a, a wonderful boon to our community, but it did not provide for maintenance and operations, and so this can help enhance the maintenance and operations of our, of our wonderful cities and county.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, uh, trails, well, Councilman Wolfson and I serve on the Regional Planning Coalition together, and we've seen the, uh, the, the, almost the baptism of the, uh, one-hundred-mile circular trail around the valley. Uh, I think it's going to be, uh, if I'm not mistaken, a hundred, a hundred and ten miles. Uh, Vegas Valley Rim Trail, or something like that, uh, which is spectacular, and I hope that our trails within the city will link at both ends to that so that people can have a way to dissect it and get anywhere they want. That's, I ha, I see you shaking your head, yes, and so that's going to be an affirmative, right?
That is an affirmative. Uh, what Councilman Coffin is referring to is a trail that's been, uh, in development for quite a long time. It was, um, in, initially conceived of in the Las Vegas Valley Open Space Plan, and then the Open Space Advisory Committee came to the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition with a, a concept for a one-hundred-plus-mile trail that would loop around the valley. Um, the Outside Las Vegas Foundation has been engaged in developing a public and private partnership for funding the next phase of this planning, um, which would involve the schematic alignment so that we can enter into the appropriate agreements for this trail. And for a long time, um, it was a bit of an orphan in terms of the naming, and so we recently engaged in a naming and branding process. We had a, a public survey where we had, um, eight hundred and fifty-eight people respond, and the overwhelming winner was the Vegas Valley Rim Trail. And so we've developed a logo, and we'll actually be become, be, uh, coming before the councils again in September with a proclamation, and we are looking forward to launching, um, the Vegas Valley Rim Trail on October first at National Trails Day.
Uh, Mayor, if I might, I have to put in a plug for the, uh, City Planning Department. I apologize, Mauricio, but the initial concept came when the council adopted the, uh, City of Las Vegas Open Space Plan, and then that was adopted by SNRPC, and it was to do exactly as Councilman Coffin described, have a way to link up the city's trail system to the outs, to the, you know, outer perimeter of the valley, and then link up to, um, some of the federal lands and those trail opportunities. So the, the, uh, genesis of that concept came from the City of Las Vegas.
Yay for Las Vegas, because good ideas fly. So this is wonderful. We congratulate you. It's exciting. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, just, I have one other thing.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman?
Um, when you start launching this, you'll contact and let each of us know so that we might spread the word through our neighborhood associations and then be able to get volunteer help to you?
We certainly will. We, we plan on working very closely with council staff, and, um, as I, as I noted, we'll be meeting with council staff tomorrow, in fact, in order to begin outlining the program. We want to, we very much want to make sure that we involve every single council person in all of the different wards in this process.
And in the meantime, if people have questions, that seven one five zero two two six number would be the one to call.
That is, that's a direct line to me, so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that people might have.
It was flashed on?
We should.
Oh, we should, I guess, flash it on the screen. Um, and then the last thing is, you know, we've talked about picking up litter and everything, and we have had some volunteers who have helped with, uh, some of the graffiti, uh, behind Mirabella Senate, for example, and we might have additional volunteers who might want to help in that, and you would like them, those people also, right?
Well, we would welcome any volunteers who are interested in working with us as we develop the program.
And I would tell you, which I know you already know, all the scouts and all the high schoolers would love to join in. It's a wonderful way for them to be involved, the community, but I know you know that. You've been too far into it. May I have a motion, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before I make my motion, um, it, it's my understanding, Mr. Perrigo, that you and my liaison, Anthony Rogero, and a couple other folks did a little bike ride over the weekend on the trails. And, you, you know, the, this is like the best-kept secret in Las Vegas, Tharn. We need to get the word out on, uh, these trails. So just take a minute to talk about where you started, uh, what the trail was that you went through, where you ended up, and what that looks like, because it's, it's very impressive. And it took you, I think, about an, an hour or so to ride your bike, so why don't you just tell everybody what you went through?
Absolutely. It was, uh, and Mauricio joined us on that ride, and as did Brian Knudson, and, and I have to mention that Brian, uh, Knudson, Audrey Dodge, and Anthony Rogero really are the, the folks who brought this project forward. But we started at the Suncoast, and we were able to ride on trail, crossing, um, only minor streets, and that trail connected up with the trail along Kellogg's Air underneath Durango. So we went along, well, first of all, we went along Angel Park, then Kellogg's Air Park, and then we turned north on the Low Mountain Trail, and we went by Pioneer Park, Doc Romeo, uh, Buckskin Basin, ended up at Bunker Park. That entire length of trail and back was about twenty miles of a bike ride, and we went over or under all the major arterials, and we only crossed a few streets, and those were, uh, minor collector streets or neighborhood streets. So you can ride twenty miles and have a, a beautiful, enjoyable morning ride, um, you know, across the city without having to worry about, it doesn't even feel like you're in the city. You're just going along parks and schools, and it's just a beautiful experience. Um, it was a little challenging, maybe. Um, Mauricio was on a brand-new bike and, uh, hit the dirt one time, but, uh, she survived, and no worse for wear, but we had a wonderful outing. It was a great time.
Lessons learned. Road bikes are not like mountain bikes. They don't go through gravel. Yeah, it, I, to, to add to what Tom just mentioned, I, I cannot express the number of people with whom I speak who are surprised, and in fact, just shocked to find out that there is a phenomenal network of trails and open space in the City of Las Vegas and throughout Clark County. Um, unfortunately, it's one of our best stories, and it's, it's one of our best kept secrets as well. And so part of the point of a project like this is actually to publicize these amenities for our residents so that they're fully aware of the fact that they have these fabulous amenities. As I go around and I find out about communities, and Tom and I have talked about this, Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Valley, Clark County, the City of Las Vegas, we have a system of trails that are unparalleled, that are probably the best in the Southwest, or close to the best in the Southwest, but people just don't know about it, and we haven't told that story enough. It's incredibly important for residents, it's important for businesses who are thinking about coming here because of the quality-of-life element, and eventually it can also become an ecotourism draw with elements such as the Vegas Valley Rim Trail. But we're just, we're very, very committed to the fact that the community has to be part of this process as we move forward.
I think that's one of the issues that we are seeing here in Las Vegas. We have a great story to tell. There's so many pieces that we're not marketing, and I know we're very interested in that, and I'm amazed you're upright, no skin knees, nothing. You're walking straight. Everybody else who rode with you? They all came back. Twenty, twenty miles.
They all came back safely.
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yeah, and before Mayor Proten makes the motion, Mayor, um, a lot of talk about the trails. I'm looking at the city's website, I'm looking at your website. I don't, I have a hard time finding maps. What, what is out there? What is available for people who want to take advantage of this incredible trail system we have?
Oh, uh, funny that you should mention that. We're actually in the process of, through a grant that was provided by the Southern Nevada Health District and the Center for Disease Control, Communities Putting Prevention to Work. We're in the process of, um, creating a, if, all-encompassing inventory of the Las Vegas Valley for the trail system. We already have that information in the SHAPE files, but in terms of really generating helpful descriptives for the public as well. Um, that information has been put into a matrix, and the Health District will be posting an interactive website, a Neons to Nature, on their website, and the Outside Las Vegas Foundation is in the process of loading all that in as well, so that within the next two or three weeks, there's going to be an interactive trail search function on the Outside Las Vegas Foundation website. And we're working with, uh, an intern that was provided by the University of Las Vegas, by UNLV, um, the School of Architecture, who is working with us to create a user-friendly map of all the trails, because there are so many trails that presenting it in a user-friendly, easy, um, easy-to-understand s, uh, approach is actually, in some ways, a bit of a challenge. So we want to create a map that will really help the public, um, and we're working with RTC on that as well.
Okay, well, Mayor, if I can, let me simplify this, because that sounded really complicated. Joe Public wants to get on their bike and go ride.
Right.
You got to make it simple for him to get to a website, and I'm going to ask, with the mayor's permission, Mr. Perrigo, there's got to be a way we can get this on our website to show the ridable, walkable, uh, ride-your-horsable, I don't care what it is, trail system, because I know we have one here in the City of Las Vegas, quite comprehensive. Uh, we need to make that easily accessible to our residents so they can make those decisions for recreation. So I appreciate your answer. I want to simplify.
Right.
Thanks.
And certainly a link. We can do a link.
Yes, certainly. And the Health District and Outside Las Vegas will both have interactive sites, and part of the objective is that we realize that when people do searches, different people's brains focus on different things. One person may be more inclined to click on the City of Las Vegas site, another person may be inclined to link, click on the Health District, another person on ours. We're just ensuring that there's consistent information across the board wherever they might go.
If you haven't felt it, it's energized us all. It's wonderful. It's fabulous, and we're going to watch you all the time, weekly.
A motion to approve item thirty-seven.
Please vote on the motion. Post. Motion carries. Congratulations. Move forward. We're excited.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On to item thirty-eight. This was surrendered and pulled, so no more thirty-eight. And on to item thirty-nine. And on to item 39. Item 39 will be trailed to be heard after item 44, so item 44. Well, we'll put that off till after 44. Let's go on to item 40. Senior Citizens Advisory Board for Possible Action, Lance Moran, Fran Drury, and Jean Zorn, term expirations, June of 2011. Recommendation procedure for this board is a recommendation by the appropriate member of the council with the approval of the council. Options are Mayor Goodman to make a new appointment to replace Mr. Moran, Councilman Coffin to reappoint Ms. Drury, or appoint a new member, Councilman Barlow to reappoint Ms. Zorn, or appoint a new member. My motion is to appoint Mary Ellen Heiss, who I have invited here just to come up and have you see her. Mary Ellen, first of all, I want to thank Lance Malone, who has served so beautifully on this board for his term. He has done an outstanding job, and finding someone to replace him with his sensitivities, I must say, out in our community has been Mary Ellen Heiss. And very briefly, if you could just give them a little history of what you've been doing with your past 20 years, briefly, please.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman, and thank you, City Council. I'm honored to be here as a very, very involved citizen in the community. I've worked for a number of years with a number of programs, through the Chamber of Commerce, youth leadership programs, and I'm involved with the senior citizens because I care about what's going on, and they're our future, as well as everyone else. Through the generosity and support of my family, I have been able to work on various committees and work in various volunteer positions and develop programs. I'm very involved in fundraising projects, and looking very much forward to the opportunity to serve, and thank you again. And if there's anything that I can do, you please feel free to call me. My number is 702-254-7423, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Vote on the motion, please. Congratulations. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you.
We look forward to having you with us.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Barlow, do you have a motion?
I do have a motion, Mayor. Thank you. I would like to reappoint Mrs. Jean Zorn, who has served on this committee, and she is proud to be a member of this committee. And I have spoken with her, and she would like to be reappointed, and I would love to reappoint her, so that will be my motion at this time.
Thank you. Vote on the motion, please. Post. Motion carries. We welcome her back. Thank you very much, Councilman Barlow. Councilman Coffin, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. No, I do not at the time, well, except to obey to a future time, perhaps. I'm not sure what council would say. And the reason is, Mrs. Drury is not in town, and on vacation. She is not available for me to discuss this with her. I don't know whether she really wants to serve, and frankly, I'd like to find out if any other people are interested in serving. So, I would like to obey it to a time for, can I hear a suggestion for the, four weeks probably would be the best?
August 17th, two weeks?
Make it, make it the first week in September, if that is still within...
Three days, September 7.
September 7?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to vote on that as a motion? Okay.
Yes, vote, please.
Then I move we obey till the 7th of September.
Vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Abayed. Okay. Item 41. Recommending Committee Bill Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill 2011-27. It's an abeyance item. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
That's in my area.
I'm sorry?
That was 40. This is 41.
Yes.
Would you kindly read the bill?
Yes.
I'll be able to, Your Honor, if the Houseman, Bill Number 2011-27, ordinance exempt from the city's noise regulations, certain activities within the district known as the 18B Las Vegas Arts District, and provide for related matters.
Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion to obey this item, because we are still a little bit away on finding the correct way to manage the noise without discomforting the, the members of the public who live in the buildings nearby. I understand the intent of the original bill completely changed from what the original intent was, and so, because of the summer, because people are not all together, we need to make sure we have them. I know there's a limit. This is the, this will be the third abeyance. They're allowed that. The question is, is to what date? Can we extend it to the September 7th meeting?
No, sir. August 17th is the last.
Then I would so move. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion. May I have a vote, please? Post, please. Motion abayed till August 17th. Is that correct? August 17th? Thank you.
Mayor, will this go before the recommending committee again, in the revised form?
No.
It would not go back to recommending unless it was requested that it go back to recommending.
Well, if it, if it's been totally changed, I mean, it should go back to recommending, I would think.
If the maker of the motion wants to include that, that's at his discretion.
Could you announce your name again, please? And, and...
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. It's just that, if, if thing is, if, if it's been totally redone, I think it ought to be, go back to recommending, so people could have a comment on it.
Mayor, of course, this is the discretion of the council. Traditionally, Mr. Farlow is correct as far as the, if there's any major modifications to the bill, we have in the past, send it back to recommending, but of course, this council can handle it as well. So, of course, I will lend that to Councilman Coffin, if that's his choice, but I'll follow his recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman, and through you, Your Honor, to my colleague, the intent is to present an amendment to the full council and not bring it back to the recommending.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item number 42. Bill Number 2011-29. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2011-29, First Amendment, in order to update the Chapter 6.06 of the Municipal Code, reading to provision licenses and product related matters.
Councilman Barlow?
Move for approval.
First Amendment?
First Amendment.
Thank you.
Vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Approved. Thank you very much. Item number 43. Bill Number 2011-30. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2011-30, in order to re-adopt the Municipal Code provisions to make it state law, Mr. Mayor, City, Mr. Mayor, if committed within the city.
Councilman?
Move for approval.
Vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, now, we have 41 on top of this. Correct. Is it 41 that's, yes. Do this one first, 44 first. Bill Number 2011-31. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2011-31, ordinance to remove the term limitation as applicable to members of the planning commission and provide related matters.
Councilman Barlow?
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor. I understand that there's some comments that possibly some of my colleagues would like to make, so before my motion, I would like to at least allow them the opportunity to make any comments that they shall. Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Understand the intent to the bill, Councilman, but I vehemently not going to support this ordinance. I concur with what the public said at the open, public speaking portion of this council meeting. Mr. Granger in the audience still, I support exactly what you said. None of us up here were elected forever. We have all been elected for a certain amount of time. Should we be re-elected, that's great, but again, for a certain amount of time. I think it's incumbent on us that we try to encourage, as Councilman Coffin mentioned earlier, with someone on the Senior Citizens Advisory Council, somebody else that wants to get involved. It's great that our planning commissioners have served in this capacity for a great deal of time, and there's certainly a great amount of, of knowledge that goes along with that, but there's not a chance in heck I'm going to support this ordinance. I want to engage the public as much as we possibly can. We are a citizen, elected city council, here for a specific amount of time. I think that's incumbent upon us to do the same thing for our planning commissioners, and let, Ms. LaGrange, those hundreds, probably thousands, of individuals who would be interested, interested in serving, giving some public service back to the city, and being engaged in the political process or the planning process, because it's a great place to learn, it's a great place to grow. There are too many wonderful residents out there, certainly not diminishing anything from our current planning commissioners or past planning commissioners, but this is significant. This is a statement by the city of Las Vegas that creates a career planning commissioner, if you will, and that's not the intent of who we are. That is not the design of local governments or government in general. I'm not going to support this bill.
Any other council members, please? Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I found myself in an interesting position on this, because the planning commissioner that I chose, that I would like to have appointed, had been limited by terms, and that was Steve Evans. In fact, he had served, I think, 10 years, but the way the cycle worked, he was term-limited, and frankly, he really didn't want to serve any longer. On the other hand, I felt that my hands were tied, because I felt that, based on my personal knowledge of how Mr. Evans managed his position within the, within the planning commission, that I learned a lot more about the planning commission. Frankly, I don't know whether all the public knows, Mr. Evans was one of the candidates for Ward 3, and we had a spirited campaign, and it was waged at the highest possible level in the primary. And he lost, and he supported me in the general election, but the interesting thing was, it really wouldn't benefit him at all, because he couldn't serve. And I said, what if we remove that term limits? And he said, he wouldn't serve anyway. So, I'm doing this for a principle and not for politics. You see, I think the planning commission is outside politics. I think it is a, a real good buffer for the council. Otherwise, you'll have yourselves being pestered constantly by people with their own interests in mind, and strictly their purely selfish interest in opposing or supporting something. And when you have someone who's in there behaving professionally, becoming familiar with our extensive codes, and there's many, many provisions in the code, I think that our government works better. Now, that person, whoever it would be, should we remove this term limit, can still be removed for several reasons. Certainly, efficiency is one of them. Malfeasance is another. There's all kinds of ways to remove someone currently in the statutes, and, and there's no removal of those in this amendment, or in essence, this amendment to the ordinance. And so, I think you can't develop skill unless you have time in a position. The position is not elected, so it is a choice, always has been a personal choice of the member of the council. This term limit was only in effect for a very short time. I don't believe it had ever been tested before. And so, I appreciate Mr. Barlow bringing forward this proposal. I strongly support it, because I feel that the skills required to be an effective planning commissioner have to be acquired. There's no school for this. I have appointed a successor, a person who was, who actually received, I received an awful lot of letters and phone calls in favor of Trinity Schlotman, his replacement, and I know he'll do well. He happens to have a pre-existing knowledge of how these things work. I looked at the files. I asked, when I came into office just 28 days ago, I asked for a list of the people who wanted to be planning commissioner. There wasn't one name, except for Sam Cherry, and I believe Sam was supporting whatever Steve wanted, in essence, Trinity. So, you see, there isn't a clamor of people to be on the planning commission. So, when you find people that are good at it and want to do it, I think you should be able to keep them. If they get abusive, you'll hear about it, and they can be removed. We don't have to wait till an election happens to remove them. So, for that reason, I think I've stated my justification for supporting this. Don't mind the controversy now and then, I just wanted to make sure I got it on the books. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Wolfson?
Thank you. First of all, for, just a slight clarification, Councilman Coffin, I don't think you intentionally said or meant this, but any appointment is subject to the ratification of the council, I believe. And I think you knew that. So, if you move to support somebody, it has to be subject to the ratification of the council. And then, secondly, when I joined the council seven years ago, the current planning commissioner that sat for my predecessor resigned, so I was able to appoint a new planning commissioner, and that was Glenn Trowbridge. And Glenn has served admirably for the last six or so years. But, I did something a little differently back then that others had not done, and that's I opened it up to an application process. Most of the time, these planning commissioners are kind of done, and I don't mean to sound negatively, but there isn't an open process. Usually, it's a more closed process, but when I opened it up, I actually had folks fill out an application, and I think there were 12 people back in '04, '05 that sought the position of, of my choice, and I actually interviewed everyone, and I chose Commissioner Trowbridge. So, I just wanted to give a little history in that regard. Yesterday, in our briefing with Mayor Goodman and Councilwoman Tarkanian, I think we spoke about the need, perhaps, to look at other like boards or commissions where we are appointing folks to, just to kind of review the process and see, well, this board is, is handled this way, and this appointment is handled that way. So, there was some discussion yesterday about obeying this item, Councilman Barlow, so that we could look at the whole, if you will. Not that anything necessarily needs to be changed, but a review, if you will, was what we were talking about, as I understand it, yesterday. And I understand, Councilman Barlow, that you may have an amendment to this bill that you may want to move for approval on today. I think that's what you said. My request would be that we just put it over two weeks. My understanding is that your commissioner will continue to serve during this period of time, but I think that the issue needs to be flushed out a little more. I would feel more comfortable if there was a little bit more discussion and analysis. If I'm right, Councilman Barlow, you're bringing to the table maybe a tweak of the original bill, and I just need to think about it and reflect on it. If I'm, if I'm right, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you. I'd like to add into this also, and having been at that meeting and that review yesterday, I think there should be a process of consistency. I think we have a wealth of people here in our community who do, even though they aren't participating in government, are knowledgeable about areas and could serve on any, I mean, they could serve on, on the council. They love our city, they want to do it, they're familiar with laws, and term limits are something that, of course, have been voted in by our, by plebiscite, by the entirety for our positions, term limits are there. My biggest concern is to make sure that those people who want to serve in our government in some manner have the opportunity to do it, and I think it's incumbent upon the council to be sure, and liking this process the Councilman Wolfson did in interviewing the people who were interested in the planning commission. I am a little concerned, too, about an inequity between different boards, different committees, different appointments, and would like to see and have encouraged that our council people involved in this have the input from our city clerk, as well as from our legal committee, to know what we have. I am new to this, of course, but some of these committees have been operative in the same manner for years, and how did it happen? And how willy-nilly was one term limited at eight years, another one at two, two-year terms? So, I would also hope that we can go forward and examine it and get all the facts before we make a final decision on that. Are there any other council? Yes, please, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure what the motion is going to be, but I just wanted to weigh in on this. I am, I'm definitely for term limits for any board, commission, anybody who's in a public policy position. I don't think they should be around for more than a couple of terms, and it's really, I mean, the whole tradition of Nevada is that we have term limits from the governor, down to the legislature, to city councils, and county commissions, and I believe boards and commissions, even if they're not elected, should be filled with people that come from somewhere, serve for a certain period of time, and then leave and go back to where they came from, and let somebody else come in and, and serve in that capacity. So, I know our boards and commissions at the city are all, some are term limits, some are not term limits. I'd like to see every single one of them have a term limit to allow for a good rotation of people coming in and out that want to serve the city of Las Vegas. So, if, if the motion is to approve this particular item, I'm not going to support it. If there's some further discussion that needs to occur in the next couple of weeks, I'm fine with that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all of my colleagues' comments, and I respect all their comments, and I really enjoy the dialogue, because what it does is really provides us an opportunity to see how, in fact, we can serve the public more efficiently and effectively. And so, for that, having a difference in philosophical ideas and, and thoughts is healthy, healthy discussion. I do want to clear up just a couple of misnomers, if you will, as it pertains to the, a planning commissioner or anyone serving as a career in a planning commission position. Each councilperson that is elected to this body has an opportunity to select whom they choose to serve as their planning commissioner. So whether it's due to the reappointment of a planning commissioner during their first or their last term, and so for that, you know, to suggest that every city councilperson that's elected from this point going forward will select the same planning commissioner, I believe is slim in none. The chances of that happening is very slim in none. So I just want to clear that misnomer up. The planning commissioner is a non-political body. I agree with my colleague, Councilman Coffin. It is a non-political body, and it is a position that is very helpful to the city council, specifically for me as a city councilman, to address a lot of the issues that come forward within my ward, in our wards, and it really helps to provide, they help to provide a different thought process that we may not have thought about as it comes forward to the city council. From my research on yesterday, I had my intern pull some research on yesterday, and from my research, there are 21 boards, according to the clerk's office, that this body appoints, roughly 21 boards. And out of those 21 boards, only three of those boards have term limits. And I agree, Mayor, it is something, after you and I spoke yesterday, it is something that we can most definitely take a look at to see if, in fact, there needs to be term limits on these boards, because the other 19 boards do not have term limits. And so I don't have a problem with taking each board if, in fact, that's something that this body would like to do, and take it on its own merit. I believe that the planning commissioner should serve at the discretion of the councilperson. In my case, my planning commissioner term is up in the middle of my term, and he serves well for me and my ward, and I would hate for a future councilperson to be in that same position. I believe that they should serve concurrent with the elected official that appoints them. So if, in fact, I wanted to or want to reappoint my planning commissioner for the term that I'm in office, that's my choice as an elected official. I'm not saying that my elected body should not have term limits because I'm in agreeance with the elected body having term limits. What I'm not in agreeance with is non-political bodies, non-elected bodies, having term limits. And so I just wanted to make that very clear. And so I don't have a problem withholding this two weeks to give council an opportunity to, in fact, vet it a little bit more, as suggested by my colleague, Councilman Wolfson. And I respect Councilman Anthony's position, as well as Councilman Ross' position. And so my motion at this time would be to hold this item in abeyance for two weeks to give those that are, still need a little bit more time to make a decision as to where they are with this item. I don't have a problem with that, because I want to make sure that it's something, a vote that is cast that will make everyone feel comfortable as elected officials, specifically with a board as important as the planning commission. So at this time, my motion would be to hold item number 44 in abeyance, two weeks.
August 17th.
August 17th. August 17th, and that would be my motion on this item.
Mayor Goodman, I'm sorry. For clarification, Councilman Barlow, were you not considering a slight modification of the bill? And if that's the case, does it have to go back to recommending, or no?
No, it does not have to go back to recommending, but after speaking with council, the only thing in the bill, bill number 2011-31 of this ordinance, the only thing that has to be removed is section C. And I have the bill here, if you would like to take a look at that, Councilman.
I think you've already, you've shown me what you're proposing. I just have the question procedurally whether it needed to go back to recommending.
No, it'll come back before the city council.
I'm satisfied.
I'd like to ask, too, if it's possible, I would like to have the report from the city clerk and the investigation you've been undergoing under the direction, of course, of our city manager, and any other pertinent information regarding term limits from our legal end as well. So just comprehensively, so we have all the information that's available, either online or however you get it to us, please, I'd like a hard copy. The other question I would have, knowing that you were filling in and were elected after two years into this term, perhaps there's a flaw right there that a newly-elected councilperson, there should be something set in there right for that particular issue.
Right, and that's what I'm currently facing today.
Perfect.
The fact that I don't have an opportunity to work with my planning commissioner for my extent of my term.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. There's a motion. May I have a vote, please?
I'm sorry?
Terms.
Terms? Oh, yeah, two more terms.
Okay, this was moved into abeyance to August 17th. That's the motion. Would you please vote? Do I have to withdraw mine? I said it says withdraw in order to vote? Oh, post, then I'm done, I guess. Motion carries and one abstention. I think it went so fast. No vote against. Okay, thank you very much, and we will see that again, and therefore, item 41 is held as well, correct?
No, Mayor, we have to go back to item 39.
39, okay.
And my motion on item 39, Mayor, would be to hold this item in abeyance 30 days.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please vote.
Can I clarify, the 30 days or two weeks, Councilman?
I'll just go 30 days.
30 days, okay.
Yeah, so that would be the first meeting in September? Okay, September 7th.
September 7th?
Yes.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And is that, that's it, or is there more? Do we have?
I'm going to 45.
45, okay. You've done such a good job for me, Ms. Clerk, I can't tell you, and I've just pulled things and put them in, so now all the numbers are out of order. Pardon me. Okay, item number 45. Item 45, Bill 2011-28 is eligible for adoption at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills. And so, new bills. Item 46, items 46, 47, bills 201 through 32, items 2011 through 33 will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, August 16, 2011. I'd like to have this bill read, please.
I'll be happy to, Your Honor. Bill number 2011-32, in order to extend the benefits of the city, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the law's obligations of benefits of the city, in private matters, and finally, bill number 2011-33, in order to amend the supplemental document to the city's administrative code to repeal and replace the provisions pertaining to the Board of Appeals and for further related matters.
Thank you very much. New bill 211 through 31 is assigned to councilmembers Barlow and Coffin, and thank you. We'll move on to item number 48. Our next item is that we'll be going to closed session for an update on labor negotiations. No motion is required, and following the closed-door session, the council meeting will be in recess until 1:00 PM, please.
Madam?
Yes, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I, my understanding is that, from our last CMO briefing, that we were not going to need a private meeting today.
That's accurate.
Closed session, no closed session.
Closed session. So we will be adjourned to 1:00 without the closed session. Thank you very much.
How's it going? Good to see you.
How's it going? David, it's Doug DeSilva. I happen to be at the 1:00 City Council here. I was wondering if I could pop up and talk to you. I was calling back when I saw five.
Oh.
I thought he asked me.
I don't have television, so I don't watch.
Well, you're only allowed to.
Capitalism, capitalism died. There is no capitalism anymore. The minute they bailed off the banks, capitalism died.
Oh, yeah. It ended up.
That was a motion.
Let your money go.
Do I do that? Or wait till it's called?
I can use my wallet.
There's a lot of block.
I know what they are.
No, no.
Capitalism, capitalism died. There is no capitalism anymore. The minute they bailed off the banks, capitalism died.
Oh, yeah. It ended up.
That was a motion.
Let your money go.
Do I do that?
Or wait till it's called?
I know what they are.
No, no.
Capitalism, capitalism died. There is no capitalism anymore. The minute they bailed off the banks, capitalism died.
Oh, yeah.
It ended up.
Green.
Full support of the state.
Whenever you ask.
Lock her back.
1916. Nixon took us off the gold standard in 1771. The farmers, the farmers were against it.
We were all fighting that silver standard.
1971.
1908 or something.
No, 71 is when Nixon, Nixon just, this couple, the dollar belt from the gold standard.
Gold was about $35, $37 an hour.
$37.
In the 60s.
Nixon took us off the gold standard in 71.
Nixon took us off the silver standard. Then, come on, come on. When you tell them, sir, that the gold was first and then silver, were you talking?
It was 90 years ago.
You're a joke, boy. I don't believe you, boy.
Maybe a hundred years ago.
Gold and gold forever.
Oh, you did try to start on the piece of.
Go, bingo. This is what happened, say, first of all, and that's before Nixon.
The price was established when Bretton Woods agreed in 1947.
Bretton Woods agreed in 1947.
Well, you've got your internet.
You want to listen to me for a minute?
At the end of World War II.
I called you today, still no answer. He said he'd never get a response back.
The Marshall Plan, actually.
He said one of the things we shouldn't have done is sign it, just monitoring the professionals.
Who built the United Nations? Who built it? Who built the bill and turned over the key? Who did?
Is there anything with weeds in the yard?
Yeah, we did. I suppose we did.
It was a good one.
One family.
The Rockefellers.
It was any building, the United Nations, United States.
It was down here.
He finds everything.
I don't know enough.
John Bercher?
It's John Bercher. That joke, too.
I don't know.
Everybody's got their country.
Probably.
They have discovered mostly stuff they didn't ever said.
Hey, was that a house?
You got some trunks.
Is it a residential property?
I looked at it.
So why'd they have something?
But the gold, they got.
He had the gold hard enough for him.
That's a lie, too, to have gold.
We were captured gold until 1977.
The gold was in Asia.
We were captured gold until 1971.
We came back. We just came back. Did they talk to you?
Yeah.
They still came, but on the floor, listen, someone else.
We can't have that.
The rest of the council.
It's coming.
I have one business card, but I cannot.
It's still on.
I didn't do it, no, I didn't.
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 They're using our money to do it.
It don't usually have to be anything to kick a new one.
Nation even has requests of the wrong item.
Do I do that?
You wait till it's called.
I can use my wallet.
There's a lot of block.
Small block.
I know what they are.
No, no.
Similar to this.
Well, first of all, capitalism, capitalism died.
There is no capitalism anymore.
The minute they bailed off the banks, capitalism died.
Oh, yeah.
It ended up.
That was a motion.
Let your money go.
You do it with your good hands.
So-called payback.
That's right.
What's going on?
Green.
Green.
Full support of the state.
Whenever you ask.
Lock her back.
Lock her back.
No, no, no.
I got, I got.
When we go up to Silverstone?
When I got.
When we go up to Silverstone?
We don't go.
Where that?
When you go up to Silverstone?
1916. Nixon took us off the gold standard in 71.
The farmers, the farmers were against it.
We were all fighting that silver standard.
1971.
1908 or something.
No, 71 is when Nixon, Nixon just, this couple, the dollar belt from the gold standard.
Gold was about $35, $37 an hour.
$37.
$37.
In the 60s.
Nixon took us off the gold standard in 71.
Nixon took us off the silver standard.
Oh, come on.
Come on.
When you tell them, sir, that the gold was first and then silver, were you talking?
It was 90 years ago.
You're a joke, boy.
Maybe a hundred years ago.
When they go on the forever.
Oh, you.
Well, you did try to start on the piece of.
Right.
Go, bingo.
This is what happened, say, first of all, and that's before Nixon.
The price was established when Bretton Woods agreed in 1947.
Bretton Woods agreed in 1947.
Well, you've got your internet.
What do you have, think you have?
Listen, this is what I'm talking about.
Do you want to listen to me for a minute?
At the end of World War II.
I know.
I know.
I got it.
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 Green.
Full support of the state. Whenever you ask.
Lock her back. I got, I got. When we go to certain bands? I got.
Nineteen sixteen. Nixon took us off the gold standard in seventy one. The farmers, the farmers were against it. We're all fighting that. Nineteen seventy one.
Nineteen oh eight or something.
No, seventy one is when Nixon, Nixon just, this, this couple of the dollar belt from the gold.
Gold was about thirty-five, thirty-seven dollars an hour. Thirty-seven dollars. Up in the sixties.
Nixon took us off the gold standard in seventy one.
Nixon took us off the silver standard. Then come on, come on. Will you tell them sorry that the gold first and then silver? Were you talking?
The vote was ninety years ago.
You're a joke, boy.
Maybe a hundred years.
Well, you did try to start on the piece of. Gold being, silver having to say, first of all, before Nixon.
The price was established when Bretton Woods agreed in nineteen forty seven. Bretton Woods agreed in nineteen forty seven.
Well, you've got your internet. What do you have to say you hear? This is what I'm looking. Do you want to listen to me for a minute? Who built the United Nations? Who built?
Built it.
Yeah, who built the building and turned over the key? Who did?
Is there anything with weeds in the yard?
Yeah, there was.
It was a good.
One, yes, sir. One family. The Rockthaus.
Yes, we have signs.
Is there any other thing? United Nations, United States. He finds everything. What about John Bercher? It's John Bercher, that joke too. You got some truth.
Is it a residential property?
But the gold been gone. He had no gold hard enough for him. That's a lie to tell me that gold.
We were kept up gold until nineteen seventy. We were kept up gold until nineteen seventy one.
They came back, did they talk to you?
Yeah. They still here but on the floor, listen. Someone else.
We can't have that.
The rest of the council. It's coming. I have one business card, but I cannot.
I didn't do it.
I'm gonna miss.
Green.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
I love it. Hello.
So your item's gonna be the first item, so I just. Just want to make sure you're here because I tried to call your office several times and I never got any answers, so, yeah. Anyways, we just wanted to make sure you're here, so I'll let my boss know.
Eighteen ninety five district. And it was J.P. Morgan against Crowder Clayton. J.P. Morgan crashed, crashed, crashed.
Where's the dog?
That's on my notes in eighty five, but I'm looking, looking for the rest of it. Well, this is. Risking.
It's not worse. I might have.
I know how I'm going down. This is what. Did we come up? No, no. We're gonna let you know.
I'm just hi. Hi, I'm. Your number's sixty two thousand four hundred and fifty six. What's gonna happen? What's gonna happen is we must. This account from the bottle just suggested that I have it withdrawn. Let me see that I can do it before him, if possible.
Yes, fifty-six. No, uh-huh.
It's not related.
Just let me that will check with him and we'll put it right.
Thank you.
He just looked at me and gave me, okay?
Oh, okay.
Uh-huh, because he's, she spoke to him just now, so.
Go ahead and add it on to a sheet. But they have the case number.
You need the case number?
Your application number.
Four, four, one, two, six, one. Two, six, one.
And that's without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Yes, without prejudice. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the afternoon session to order, please. Thank you very much. And we have held since this morning. Item, agenda, item number seventeen. For possible action to approve the purchase of an emergency twenty-bed portable hospital and essential medical supplies and equipment to be used in the case of catastrophic event. Hundred eighty-two thousand, five seventy-four, seventy-seven, FY two oh oh eight, federal metropolitan medical response system grant program. Chief, how are you?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, a little point of clarification from this morning. My understanding is we need a little bit more information. I am Chief Myers with Las Vegas Fire Rescue. The request before you today highlights our intent to purchase, and we are seeking your approval to allow us to go forward with that process. The process may include a competitive bid or other authorized public procurement process depending on the manufacturing and vendor's ability to meet those required specifications. The quote provided is a responsible estimate as both Clark County, or I'm sorry, Carson City and Washoe County each have similar portable hospitals which allowed us to adequately evaluate the potential costs. This item was posted to the agenda, and we think it has relevance since we recently sent forty-two staff members out to Amherstburg, Maryland for that emergency preparedness class. The item, once the purchasing process is complete, will return back to the council agenda under the purchasing and contracts area for your approval. And at that time, we would request to draw down those funds on the FY two thousand and eight metropolitan medical response system grant.
Questions, please?
Thank you, chief.
Yes.
I had asked a question, but it became difficult to answer based upon the background material because there was very little background material.
Okay.
Nothing on a bid process, nothing on what you have just stated verbally about there being comparable units. You didn't mention just now what price was paid by those Northern Nevada municipalities, but those things are very important.
Sure.
To know when you're selecting what appears to be a sole source.
I can kind of answer that for you. Our intent here is to bring it forward for you, to let you know that our intent is to go forward with a, with a portable hospital, something that can be rapidly deployed here in the south. We have looked at the vendors that were used by Washoe County and Carson City. Obviously, our intent is to mimic something like that, so it's compatible. It's a regional asset within the state. We are required to follow the same purchasing process as any other city department, the fire department is, and regardless of grant or otherwise. So we're working with Kathy Rainey's division to make sure that we either need a competitive bid, a government services contract, or a sole source. That process has not been done yet. So this is to bring it forward to you, let you know what our intent is. We will take it back. It will go to the purchasing and contracts agenda probably within thirty to ninety days, we would, we would expect.
Thank you very much. That's, that's, I think what we were all hoping for.
Yes, sir.
So, if I may, so just so I understand more clearly, what you're just asking for is permission to move ahead to get an emergency bed portable, but you're not saying where you're going to get it from. That comes at a later date.
That's correct.
And that's when the bidding process occurs.
That's correct. We wanted to bring you a reasonable estimate based on what other agencies around the state have bid for. We think this hospital is a necessary and needed piece of equipment here in the south. It is a regional asset. We have partners within the region that will, will be.
We all agree with you on that, too. And we'll feel very strongly for that.
So the, whether we go to a competitive bid process, a sole source, we work with our general services partners, we're not sure yet. We will work with Kathy Rainey's group to pick one of those options, whatever is the most responsible and reasonable thing to do.
Okay, because with this amount of money, usually you would have a competitive bid, wouldn't you?
It depends. I don't know, Kathy, if you wanted to comment on that. My only comment would be if other agencies within the community have a similar hospital, and we deploy all the hospitals at one time, we want them to be compatible, fit together, and operate the same. So we want to buy the same hospital, if that makes sense. But I don't exactly know how this will play out. We haven't discussed it yet.
I see. So theirs aren't purchased necessarily either. They're also in the same process we are.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. Washoe County and Carson City do have theirs purchased already and own theirs.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy Rainey, purchasing and contracts. If you have, when a department brings a procurement requirement to the purchasing organization, we typically will always propose competitive bidding. However, there are some general services contracts that have already been competitively bid at the federal level. So if we find that those are very competitive pricing to the quotes that have been brought to us, sometimes we forego our own competitive bidding in favor of a federally competitive bid that is already available. So that's a choice we have.
But it's still based upon competitive bidding if the public wanted to know.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very, very much.
Thank you.
So at this point, are there any other questions? Are we moving on the motion here, then?
I think that the question is, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
What Chief Myers is asking for is permission to move forward with the purchase of, and putting an RFP out on the street, and so on and so on. Am I correct?
That's correct, sir.
And we were not spending the money right this minute.
No.
We're not gonna slow down the fire department picking up one of these portable mobile hospitals and put our public safety at risk. You're just asking for permission to move forward with that process.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So will someone make a motion exactly stated that way, please?
So move?
Thank you. Vote on the motion, please? Post, please? Okay.
I do.
And Madam Mayor, that, this is Jim Lewis in the attorney's office. Just to clarify, that's a, a motion to move forward, not a motion to approve the purchase of?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. As I understand it, we will be getting more information on that. And it's a vote of confidence. Thank you very much. Excuse me. And now we'll move on for number forty-nine. Possible action, any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and act upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifty is a public hearing regarding a vacant lot located behind Glen Landing Avenue. Property owner, RES Nevada, S D LLC staff has asked us to be stricken. Item number fifty-seven, ROC four, one, eight, five, one, applicant, Weingarten Realty Investors owner, Decatur two fifteen LLC, six, one, oh, one, six, three, seven, one, North Decatur Boulevard. Applicant has asked us to be obeyed till September seventh, twenty eleven. Item number sixty-two, SDR four, one, two, seven, one, applicant owner, Nevada State Bank, two, oh, one, South Fourth Street and two hundred Las Vegas Boulevard South. Applicant has asked us to be obeyed till September seventeenth, twenty eleven. And item fifty-six, SUP four, one, two, six, one, this is an abeyance item, special use permit. Applicant is good times. Smoke and chew owner, Mealy Pono Holding, one, two, four, South Sixth Street, Suite one, seven, zero. And applicant has asked us to be withheld without prejudice. And that will be my motion.
With help?
Is that withheld or withdrawn?
I have WD.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
Without prejudice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and that was without prejudice. May I have a vote on the motion, please? Post, please? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Onto item number fifty, that's the one that's been stricken. Onto item number fifty-one. I need page turners here. Public hearing for possible action to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees and/or civil penalties for the property located forty-three, twelve Fulton Place in the amount up to twenty-two thousand, three hundred seventeen. Property owner, Bank Deutsch National TRS Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the property owner present?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to please come forward and, thank you? And Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Chris Knight.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And I know who you are.
Director of Building and Safety. In December of two thousand nine, the code enforcement officers were, were called to a site at forty-three, twelve Fulton Place where we found a vacant burned-out house that had some high weeds in it, had refuse and waste in the yards. We issued a notice and order, a notice of compliance, made several visits back to the property. You see the property on your screens. And in December of two thousand nine, we conducted an abatement on the property where we went and closed up the building, boarded up any open windows, doors, cleaned up the site of the property. And the hard costs associated with that totaled with civil, some of the civil penalties, thousand five hundred and fifty-three. The daily civil penalties of five hundred and fifty dollars, or five hundred dollars a day equated to about twenty thousand dollars. So we had a total of about twenty-two thousand and some odd change dollars on the property. Since then, Deutsch Bank has, has foreclosed on the property, and we have learned that there is an individual that is interested in buying the property and rehabbing the property, but he can't afford the twenty thousand dollars in civil penalties and is asking for a waiver of those civil penalties. Staff, in typical fashion with, with the actions of the council, has looked at if you were to choose, as you have done in the past, to waive the ninety percent of the civil penalties and assess ten percent, that would be two thousand dollars. With the additional hard costs remaining in place, that would reduce the, the penalties from about twenty-four thousand and something to about four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. Mr. Chu is here. We have talked with them as far, and he can represent that, but as far as we understand, they're agreeable to paying the forty-three, seventeen, and that would settle the issue with us.
My name is Andy Chu with Hopewell Realty on behalf of Bank of America. Basically, everything that Devin said right now, that we understand that there is a notice on it. We acquired the property back in October tenth, October first, two thousand and ten. So the notice started piling up in two thousand and nine. So this, what happened was the property, there's a fire on it, and then basically, someone collecting insurance on it never, was never addressed. We do have a new buyer on the property. I believe they are here today. And they are willing to take care of all the property, everything, in terms of the fire and everything else, but we will have to take care of the penalties at this point in time.
Councilwoman?
When he says we will have to take care of.
Bank of America.
The Bank of America would have to take care of them.
Right.
So the Bank of America has had it for about a year in not-so-hot condition?
That is correct.
And has really done much to improve it itself. So really, it's the Bank of America, not the people who are wanting to buy, that I would think is at fault as far as the bad condition.
Well, the bad condition happened back in two thousand and nine.
I know, but then you acquired ownership. And once you acquire ownership, I just tell you, this is what's happening in our neighborhoods. Bank of America, the other banks, they acquire these places, and they do nothing, nothing, to approve, improve what the situation is. And then what happens is the neighborhood goes down, down, down. And this is, I'm sure, happening in all the other wards, too. So my question, if I might, Chris, is. Why would we be reducing it so much for the Bank of America, which has tremendous assets, when they didn't follow through and do what I would feel would be their responsibility?
Councilwoman, that's entirely up to your discretion.
And I was just wondering, oh, you were just telling us this is what we usually do.
That's what has been done in the past on other properties with private ownership, but it's, it's really up to you whether you want to put the bank in a position to pay the full civil penalties of twenty thousand dollars or not.
Yes.
Mayor Goodman, may I please?
Please.
With Councilwoman's permission. Chris, can you show us a couple more of the pictures? Because I want to get some clarification, because I think I understand what Councilwoman's talking about, but can you show us like a pre-abatement picture and then a post-abatement picture?
I believe we have those. If someone in the back room can run those pictures back.
Okay, I thought we saw some pictures during your.
You did. There they are. Those are current pictures, and you can see by this picture that's up right now, that there is some fire damage on the front, on the front left side of the, of the house. Most of the fire damage occurred inside the house. That fire damage did occur prior to us being called on-site in September two thousand and nine, so that house has existed that way since September two thousand and nine.
That's the point, is that there was a nuisance. The city was called. The city corrected the nuisance, and then it's been in this status quo position for a long time. Bank of America became the owner, what, about eight months ago?
October tenth, October first, two thousand and ten.
Well, that's about eight months ago, isn't it? Okay, so I guess the question is, when they took over ownership in October of two thousand and ten, that was the.
Ten months or no?
Well, ten months.
Yeah.
That was the condition of the property generally, right?
That's correct.
So the question becomes, do we want a bank to improve the property, to make it more attractive, so that people can come in and perhaps purchase it, or just maintain the status quo? And I'm not sure what is right. Should we require a bank to put twenty-five thousand dollars into a property, paint it, you know, do some facial decorations to make it attractive? Or at the very least, just maintain that it doesn't fall into disarray with weeds and all that kind of stuff? I agree that I don't think these folks should be penalized at all. They want to move in and improve the property and improve the neighborhood. The question then becomes, should we expect a bank that comes in kind of midway after the problem, but doesn't do anything to really improve the property, they just kind of maintain it? Am I hitting the nail on the head?
Yes, you are.
If I might add, I didn't care if they improved it, but they could have maybe painted it so it didn't look the way it looked there for all the other neighbors to have a rundown building there. And they make profit.
And I don't disagree. Just a paint job which might cost two or three thousand dollars might improve the look in the neighborhood. I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but I didn't mean improve the property as, you know, build on something or have. I'm just saying to not, not improve so much, but bring at least close to what the visibility of it was aesthetically within the neighborhood. So Christopher?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering, in a situation like this, how could one go about handling this so the appropriate people are responsible? Too late, maybe?
You're making it rough on me, my first time, aren't you? I, I think that Vicki just whispered in my ear that Bank of America, of all the banks that we deal with, actually, when we have abatements and we send notices to them, are, are one of the few banks that actually. one of the few banks that actually work with us and have actually abated some of their properties. I think from a staff standpoint, while it is entirely at the discretion of this council to fully assess the full daily civil penalties of twenty thousand dollars, I think from a staff standpoint, we have someone who has actually got a history of trying to work with us. And we're comfortable treating them as you have treated other private individuals who have owned homes and asked for these waivers, so we're comfortable with that.
Okay, so you feel that they have helped in then other situations?
Yes, ma'am, they have.
Do you want my motion?
Are there any other comments? I see.
Councilwoman Dan Stell, City Attorney's Office, I know you have concerns with this, and this is a common problem that we've dealt with over the last few years. Another thing you may want to consider is to have the representative explain what the intent is of the buyer, and maybe put a timeline on them to bring the thing into compliance. It's still under the notice and order, and still, to fix it, whatever they're going to do, tear it down, paint it, repair it, I'm not sure what the intent is. So that you get the cleanliness of the neighborhood on some kind of a timeline versus whenever they decide they're going to do it.
If I may, in response to that.
Thank you.
In response to that, in the letter, they've asked for ninety days, and that is one of the things I had thought about since talking to you, is that it is entirely your discretion to waive this twenty thousand dollars. In doing so, I assume, based on what Dan just said, you can condition that. And they've asked for ninety days to get the property cleaned up. That's going to be a pretty tight timeframe. But as the building official, if you wanted to condition it, I would recommend you give them ninety days to get their plans drawn, submitted to our department, approved, and permits taken out, and then that the project, the house, has to be rehabilitated within the hundred and eighty days that a building permit is good for.
When you say "they," you're talking about the bank?
They, no, they would be the property owners.
We're giving the property owners a hundred and eighty days, or we're giving the bank a hundred and eighty days?
We're giving the property owners ninety days to get their plans put together and take out their permits, and then giving them another hundred and eighty days to actually do the construction on the home.
And all of this for the total amount of forty-three seventeen?
Yes, ma'am.
To take it from the bank that's been holding it for eight, ten months?
Yes, ma'am.
And got it in the condition that it was?
Yes. Otherwise, the twenty thousand dollars would have to be assessed back onto the property.
On the property, but not only because the bank took it over eight months ago?
Yes, ma'am.
It has been accruing all over that period of time to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Please, one more question. I want to feel comfortable that we're doing this with the expectation that these folks that are in the audience, we haven't identified them by name, are going to purchase the home and close escrow, et cetera. They could change their mind tomorrow. I don't want to waive the fees unless we have the expectation that these folks, which we may want to identify on the record, actually consummate the deal and close escrow and move into the property.
And that could be another condition that you place on.
I mean, that's my feelings, Councilwoman, it's in your ward, but.
No, I think that should be a condition. I think both of the conditions, the one you mentioned as far as the time and days and what you're mentioning here.
We want to identify them.
No.
Yeah.
I cannot see real holdout there, but would the new owner step up to the podium, please?
And fine with the representatives as well.
You know what's going to happen. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do with another bank.
Hello, would you kindly state your name and respond to some of these questions that we have, or your representatives may do so for you?
I'm Sergio Campion, and I'm going to be the new buyer.
Sergio Campion? Could you spell the last name, please?
C-L-O-M-P-E-A-N.
Okay. And you are fully aware of this, the reduction and the fees of the forty-three hundred seventeen dollars that is being suggested is with the waiving of the other fees, and that you would get the property for that and have a total of ninety days to submit the permit part, but a hundred and eighty overall to make some improvements, or?
To complete the improvements.
To complete the improvement.
Yes, I'm agree with that.
And with you, gentlemen and lady, representatives with him, owners?
No, Aldo Martinez, I'm the broker with Potential Americana Group, or the representative for the buyer in this transaction. It's, the buyer's not actually acquiring the property for four thousand, they're waiving the actual four thousand so that the bank can actually complete the transaction and sell it to the purchaser who's purchasing that property. He believes he can finish it in a much quicker time, however, that ninety days to a hundred and eighty days is actually very adequate, so that if there's any problems with getting any permits approved or reexamined, it should give them ample time to complete the repairs.
And at what price, if I might ask, is the sale of the property?
It is, my name is Pilani Sama, I'm the selling agent, and the property is for thirty thousand dollars.
The property is for sale to him for thirty thousand?
Yes.
And the fees waived?
The fees that is waived, the bank will pay for that portion. So the buyer actually only pays thirty thousand dollars, and the bank is responsible to pay their own penalties.
Okay. Are there any other questions, please? Yes, our attorneys? No. Councilmen and women?
Are we supposed to hear the speaker before I make the motion?
No, I want to speak out on this.
I didn't know just legally, because I'm a little confused on all this public input now. I mean, I noticed that there were speakers.
We have people that are here to, and are able to speak in the public hearing portion on this, perhaps you'd like to come forward. I was just wondering, at this point, were there any particular questions right here?
Oh, I understand. No, I think I'm understanding that the actual cost for repair plus the ten percent of what to do on the other would be covered by the bank. Is that right, Chris?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. So the bank's going to cover that. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, please state your name.
Thank you, Todd Farley, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I am adamant that the banks take the loss on this. They take the hit. I want to either inform you or remind you that when AIG was bailed out, hundreds of millions, I'm sorry, hundreds of billions of that dollars went to bail out the foreign banks that had the CDOs on these properties. At citizen participation, last week, I went on Wells Fargo. This week, I'm going to go on Ken Lewis and his bunch of vampire squids at Bank of America. So, but at any rate, at any rate, this thing has been sitting here for years like this, the banks take the loss. They have to take the hit, not the people that's buying it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's what we're doing, I think.
My name is Anthony Hardin, two, three, Sir David. I'm going to have, I'll let him take the lead, because he's too pretty a job. The truth is, we all need to come to one conclusion. Banks and insurance companies will rip off their grandmother. Do that mean a lot to anybody? What I'm trying to say, if the bank can get away with not paying, they're going to skip it on, pass it on, whatever. But these people that's buying the property, they shouldn't be stuck with anything that the bank and the owners before that had anything to do with. The new owner has no obligation to what's happening in the past. The city get caught up in this, y'all lose money, and the new owners come out here and people, so, they don't, hey, get the bank, and if insurance companies involved, get them to. Insurance company and bank is devastating to this nation, sorry.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions of Chris. Chris, what was the amount that we paid to repair the property? The actual cost that we had to pay?
The hard cost, the hard cost. The total hard cost was a thousand one hundred and three. The abatement costs specifically were five hundred dollars. But with inspection fees, administrative fees, and late fees is a thousand one hundred and three, with other civil penalties, it came up to fifteen, one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
So the civil penalties by themselves, how much was that?
The civil penalties, the daily civil penalties by themselves was twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand.
He's asking, I think, for ten percent.
And you're saying that in the past, we've done ten percent?
Of the daily civil penalties. Yes, ma'am.
Well, my motion would be that we approve this with a full amount of the hard costs repaired, repaid back to the city, and with the civil penalties being twenty-five percent of the twenty thousand, which would be how much?
Twenty percent of twenty thousand be four thousand.
Four thousand dollars. So it would be then five thousand four hundred and twenty, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Got that right, thank goodness.
I think so.
I would like to do it that way, and I'll tell you why. I think that it's giving it a little extra cost to the bank for letting it sit that long without even painting the outside of the wall, walls that face the neighborhood. But it gives a lot, not that the bank has to pay, and I'm doing that because you evidently at Bank of America, from what the staff says, has tried in the past to fulfill your duty in meeting these needs. And that's what you did tell us, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because if it were a bank that hadn't, I would have gone for the full amount. I really would. And I think that those two who spoke, our two gentlemen who spoke and added information, I hope you understand what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to show that we respect those who do try and help the citizens, who do try and help the neighborhoods. So we'll reduce that amount, but the other full amount on the hard costs, and if you didn't do it, then we'd go the full amount. So I move that we do all of the hard costs and twenty-five percent of the other, and that we use that as the amount of money.
Are you twenty-five percent or twenty percent?
Twenty-five percent is five thousand, Chris, not four thousand.
Yeah, twenty-five percent is five thousand.
Okay, well, I will say five thousand.
Okay. If you'd let, give me just one minute to do some math, I'm not good at it off the top of my head.
So that'll be sixty-five fifty-three.
Sixty, that would be sixty-five.
No, sir, because there's another seven hundred and sixty-four on a previous case that's still owed on this of hard costs, so it's seven thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars.
On the previous case?
Yes, ma'am.
I haven't heard that one.
So when you add the five thousand in, it moves to seven three seventeen.
Is that Bank Deutsch before it went to Bank of America?
Yes, it's all the same.
You can't separate the two out?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That was hard cost.
Those were hard costs as well.
Hard costs, yeah.
Mayor Goodman, may I please ask you a question?
Absolutely.
With your permission, Councilwoman Paulson. If the council votes consistent with Councilwoman Tarkanian's motion, will that kill the sale of the house?
That might be a possibility, I cannot answer for sure. Unfortunately, it's one of those things where we went to the bank, we came to the conclusion, we've actually went to upper management on it, and we've come to some type of conclusion. If this were to happen, they have to go back to, it goes to upper management, which is for us, Bank of America, which then goes over to Deutsche Bank eventually. They have to approve the sale regardless, one way or another.
See, that's my only concern.
Okay, how about going, instead of the twenty-five percent, going twenty percent?
I would imagine that still has to go back. Any change to this offer would have to go back, or no?
Well, if we have approval for four thousand three hundred and seventeen.
Plus the hard cost.
So anything beyond forty-three seventeen, then it has to go back? Which is odd.
Yeah. One way or the other, the banks get me. One way, even here when I'm trying to make decisions.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Question, how long would it take to get a response, were this penalty assessed at a higher level, be it at fifty dollars, doesn't matter?
Best-case scenario would be that we sent to our upper management, which then sends it out. It's about a three-layers process, it might take about two weeks.
Well, I'd go for that, two weeks. I, that's okay.
You want to obey it?
No, I don't want to obey it.
If you go higher, if you go higher.
I know.
It's going to take two weeks to get approval. It's going to take two weeks to get approval. That's what he's suggesting.
On the best-case scenario.
Two weeks on the best-case scenario, two weeks with a different offer than what's on, originally on the table.
That is correct. And keep in mind that the, just, I'm throwing it out there, the sales price is very low, at thirty thousand. With all other costs assumed with the banks, I believe there is a clause in there that if the bank doesn't net more than one, less than one dollar, they will not sell the property. I don't know what the net, the net to the bank will be at this point in time, but I'm just throwing that out there.
If the bank has a what, it's less than?
If they don't net anything great, if they net less than what their, less than zero, then they won't, they won't sell the property.
But you don't know if it would be less than zero.
I can find out.
If I could add.
You'd have to wait, yeah.
This is the final decision for the property to actually close, because all funds and everything are in escrow, ready to close for the potential buyer at the amount that was approved. You know, something that we, that you might want to consider, I'm sorry, Aldo Martinez, broker for Potential Americana Group, one of the things that you might consider, which is running rampant throughout the country right now, is that when properties are getting to this low of a price point, and they drop even lower, we've had Wells Fargo, Bank of America, and I think the other one is actually Chase Manhattan Mortgage Corporation, which has actually bulldozed the properties down to the ground and then turned them over back to the municipalities for development purposes as gift. And that's something that's going, majorly happening right now in Cleveland, Detroit, and in Chicago. And we're talking in tens of thousands of properties that are actually being bulldozed once they get to a non-profitable margin. So I know that there was some hard costs secured by the city to actually just basically stabilize the property, but as long as we can continue to move this process along, it'll be the, you know, it'll improve the rate at which Las Vegas and its counties will be able to get out of the foreclosure situation that we're in.
I am, I'm understanding, if I'm understanding correctly, it was the First Bank that caused the problem?
No, ma'am, it was the original homeowner.
Well, caused the problem, but the First Bank held the note on it. Was that Deutsche Bank?
That's correct. Deutsche Bank would have held the note on the property, however, could not have foreclosed on the property.
I'm sorry. You don't have to do that, Mr. Campion down there. Okay. And.
But they could not have foreclosed on the property until the due process went through, until they had met their required time periods.
Or you. Okay.
And that's, I think, what was the problem with, when the city took over, the bank was not in possession of the property at that time. It was still under the ownership of the owner.
No, I know the owner did it, but they, bank owned it, and that bank, the First Bank, did not make the improvements.
The First Bank is just the owner of the note, ma'am. Bank of America is actually the servicer, it's Bank of America Home Loan Servicing, which acquired it from Countrywide Bank back in two thousand and seven. I mean, there's a huge history to it. They're just a servicer. So they service the property for Deutsche Bank.
Okay. I appreciate all the information that you're giving me, and now that I've taken all this time, and this lady wants to talk now.
Yeah, well, I'm representing Sergio Campion, I'm the listing, selling agent on this property. This property has several liens that the bank usually is taking a hit for that. There is not too much gain to the bank on this. This is, we were waiting over three months for this property. This guy is desperate to move into the property, and we were holding just because of this meeting. I will ask you to please reconsider your seven thousand for the forty-three thousand, so you're going to make a home buyer happy. I wrote an addendum stating that he will fix whatever needs to be fixed in the timeframe you guys allowed. He has no problem doing that. The bank basically is taking a hit. I have the preliminary title report, if you guys want to see it, the liens that the banks are paying for that, I have it if you want to inspect, so what they are paying also, besides other costs that they have.
Thank you very much. I apologize that I take so much time on things like this, but these are big things for a community. These little things end up to be big things for a community and for individuals. This may be a rare time that the individual here would be able to purchase the property at this price. And I think I have to take that into consideration. So I'll move along with the first motion, because Bank of America didn't cause any problem, they didn't maybe make it any better so that it fit the neighborhood, but they didn't cause the original problem. And I just feel that this gentleman may not have another chance. We are here, he's right at the brink, point of being able to obtain the home, and so I will make a motion to follow through with the full amount as recommended by staff, which I believe was four thousand three hundred seventeen?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please vote, please post. Congratulations, Mr. Campion. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Knight, thank you.
If I may, Mayor, for the comfort of the council, we're aware of the situation, the difficulties that the banks cause with foreclosures and the foreclosure rate in the city of Las Vegas. Staff is doing some research on something that we might be able to do to address that and get a more early warning on some of those issues. Staff is doing some research on something that we might be able to do, uh, to address that and get a more early warning on, on some of those issues. It's not fully fleshed out, but, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I just wanted to let you know that there is research going on, on how we can approach, uh, some of this in a more proactive manner.
And if I may, Mayor, I really appreciate that, because you can see, I feel that the banks are getting away with stuff, uh, still making strong profits, not putting that money back into the community, and I'm not just the only one, you can read the New York Times, you can read anything, and they're telling us the same thing about the banks now, to help the individuals. In this situation, you have your back against the wall as far as what we're able to do. And so if you're looking at things that will help us set it right, and our staff can figure that out, I certainly would be most appreciative.
Mayor Goodman?
Thank you.
Uh, please, because our previous mayor was hounding Mr. Steele for twelve years to come up with some law and some support for doing something. And now that we have a new sheriff in town, his name is Chris Knight. Maybe we'll get some brand-new ideas.
Well, and I want to assure you that Senator Reed is trying to help through Bank of America to help resolve some of these issues, because we're all in pain and know what's going on in the community for everybody. And, Mr. Knight, you're a saint, so just keep going and doing your good work.
Could you call my wife, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to item number fifty-two. Uh, public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of new nuisance located six, four, two, eight Evergreen Avenue in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, fifty cents, general, general fund, and assess a maximum of seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty in daily civil penalties. Property owner, Daniel in Guadalupe, Ornelas, Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing, I declare it open, and is the property owner present, please?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Knight, no.
Chris Knight, Director of Building and Safety, again. Uh, we opened a case on this house as a result of a complaint about attractive nuisance with open windows, open doors, um, uh, high weeds, uh, and refuse in the yards. And, uh, we started an abatement in four, twenty-nine of two thousand and eleven, completed that abatement the same day. Uh, we have those costs that you outlined in the introduction, a total hard cost of two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents, with, uh, civil penalties of four thousand, one hundred and sixty-four, for a total of seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five, uh, dollars that we are asking to, uh, lean the property with. We did eight, uh, site visits and had six failed inspections, which drove a lot of those civil penalties and, and hard costs for us.
Are these photos the before or after?
Uh, those are pre-abatement, those are the before photos.
And do we have the beautiful after photos?
Yes ma'am, they're coming up. Here's the post-abatement, you'll see the front yard's been cleaned up.
And the pool, was it full originally or drained?
I'm not sure. I don't think they drained the pool.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I would like to remind the council of this. In, um, in, in the general mortgage agreement that people signed, there's always a clause in there that says that the bank, the owner of the note, can go in and remedy whatever problem is, 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 that the property has. It's a general thing that was pounded out by the M, the, 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 all the lawyers. It's a general agreement. This, and the general mortgage plan states that the mortgage holder can always, always go in and remedy any problem that the, that the house has. So someplace, there's a bank that owns this thing, and let's nail them now.
My name is Hodge, one, two, threes a day. Uh, that's a good thing, but at the same time, maybe this property, do the homeowner, did they pay the profit of, is the bank involved in any way, sir?
Uh, the property has been foreclosed on, and there is a bank involved, I don't know what bank it is specifically.
Okay, well, there you go again, y'all, you got a bank hanging in the background, okay? All I'm trying to say, I just want y'all to get your money, and, 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 put the property in some sort of position that you know that it can be sold on the market, and, you know, for everybody's sake, we need to put people in houses, whatever, and get the economy going. But the objective is, it's not like another deal with the bank, in the backyard, okay? Remember, I'm telling you, banks and insurance companies, hey, those guys, they out there, they'll get you each time, whatever. But anyway, another thing, you got a couple of palm trees, they take care of themselves, so those trees are doing all fine, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Chris, could you tell me what this home is worth, do you know?
Yes ma'am, on, uh, zilla dot com, Zillow dot com, as of, uh, today, eight, I'm sorry, yesterday, eight, two, two thousand and eleven, was listed as being valued at fifty-two thousand, two hundred dollars.
Councilman, please, what is that based on, Chris? You say it's listed, it?
I'm, I'm not sure, that's a, that's a,
Is that the assessor's value, or is that a fair market value?
I think it's a fair market value, sir.
Okay.
Do you know anything about the inside, is it normal? Nothing, not entered. Okay, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Well, there's no buyer involved here, nobody's got their back against the wall. I move to have the full amount of the general fund, two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents, and twenty percent of the, uh, additional monies that have been fined.
Thank you, there's a mo, vote on the motion, please, post.
Well, I think we need to have a definite figure.
You need to have the full figure?
Mayor Goodman, please.
Yes.
Chris, do we need to have a definite figure based upon what Councilwoman is asking for? Twenty percent of the civil penalties, is that?
Well, wasn't it listed here, seventy-one, nine, fifty?
If you just say twenty percent of the daily civil penalties, we can calculate that, that will cover it.
And that's what I said.
Yeah.
Okay, vote please on the motion. Post please. Motion carries, thank you very much. Item fifty-three, public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of new nuisance located four, one, oh, one Meadows Lane, the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, fifty cents, general fund, assess a maximum of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty in daily civil penalties. Property owner, four, one, oh, one Meadows Lane Invest Group LLC, Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing, I declare it open, is the property owner present, please? And please state your name.
I'm Douglas Silva for four, one, oh, one Meadows Lane Investments, LLC.
Thank you, um, Mr. Knight.
Yes ma'am, um, as of, uh, January eleventh of two thousand and ten, a case was opened on this piece of property, and notice, uh, an order was issued in March of two thousand and eleven. Um, there is no foreclosure verified, so I believe this gentleman's the property owner. Uh, the abatement was started in five, eighteen, two thousand and eleven. We had a thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars in total hard costs and, uh, civil penalties added in of thirty, three thousand, four hundred and fifty for fifty-two, forty-two, additional daily civil penalties of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, what we found on the property is a detractive nuisance, again, was accessible doors and windows were open that the contractor had to board up. Uh, there was graffiti on the building, and, as you can see in the picture, and high vegetation, and the contractor cleaned it up and applied herbicide to it. Uh, so we are recommending that, uh, and there is, uh, on Zillow dot com, we were not able to ascertain a value of the property at this time. So, um, we are recommending that, uh, you assess the daily civil penalties and the hard costs.
Sir, would you comment?
Well, yes, first of all, I'd like, like to think that, I'd like to say that I think the, uh, this is a little bit of a mischaracterization of what the, uh, original nuisance letter was. The original letter came out indicating that there were substantial trailers parked on the property, that the property was being used as a storage facility for furniture. Uh, we acquired this property in September of ten. And in October of ten, we leased it to Bart Mayby of Hotel Furniture Sales, who subsequently went out of business via bankruptcy, and opened a location on Highland Drive in the city of Las Vegas, where your offices subsequently made him move from, because he didn't have a license to operate and, uh, wasn't allowed to store, uh, second-hand furniture, uh, within the city of Las Vegas without a license. He had leased our property to store additional, uh, furniture. So, uh, we informed the tenant that he was gonna have to get the furniture out of the property, remove the trailers and, and such, and of course, take care of the, uh, the weeds, which were somewhat minor in my opinion, um, and, uh, abate the property. We saw that the trailers were removed, there was also someone that was camping out on the property in trailer, we had that towed from the property. Uh, since, uh, the tenant, uh, moved out, abandoned the balance of the property that was left in there, you know, we pulled some twenty-five trailers of, uh, used furniture out of the property and have removed it, and probably have another, you know, four trailers, uh, you know, left to go. I was happy when I got possession of the property, and I came by and saw that the weeds were cut, the windows were boarded, and it was my assumption at the time that, uh, the tenant had done it in compliance with the notice that, uh, that we had sent him. But I think there was a little bit of a, of a time lapse between when the city did their, uh, did their abatement, and I regained possession of, of the property. I have no issue that you went out and did the work, you did the work, and it needed to be, needed to be done. Uh, my issue is with the, with the penalties here, we think we've gone the extra mile to see that, the, what I consider the major violations were rectified in a timely manner.
Any questions here from the, uh, council? Is that going to be, is that up for sale, that building now?
We're looking, we're looking to lease it, you know, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a market to sell it at this time.
Okay, and so you, you are constantly monitoring that it is kept up to?
Yep.
And in your recent visits, or our inspectors' visits, it has maintained its?
Yes ma'am, you can see by, um, if, um, they can go back to some of the post-abatement pictures.
Would you show us the pre and post, and again, just quickly?
There are some pre-abatements, I think they're running them back right now. They can go ahead and run through them if they would.
I know, this is the question I had right there. Why would you leave, uh, a window bordered up? That was the one thing, I understand what you said about the weeds and everything.
You know, we fixed two windows, um, this year that, uh, were broken to our knowledge. And apparently this last window was broken in the interim, we just didn't have knowledge it was broken, and you bordered it up in the, uh, in the interim. You know, we, uh, we had to change the, uh, uh, some vagrants broke into it, broke the locks, we went out and changed the locks, had it repaired, repaired the front door. We have been maintaining the property, and I honestly believe that, uh, the abatement that was done was done at our direction.
So, the recommendation from staff was, uh, the hard costs plus, uh, your ten percent is that you?
No ma'am, the full daily civil penalties.
And why are you different in that?
Well, we've been recommending on, that, full daily, daily civil penalties, when we come to assess the liens and, and to assess the, uh, the costs. Only in the, the fee waiver request did we recommend only ten percent.
I see.
Uh, in the item before and this item, it's still the full daily civil penalties. The daily civil penalties accrue from the time,
Right.
Uh, that is eleven days after we first give notice, uh, of correction. Uh, there's eleven days that goes by to give the property owner an opportunity to do the correction. We go, but, we go and investigate, if it hasn't been corrected, the daily civil penalties then begin to accrue. They accrue until the time that we complete and approve the abatement. So it's only in that timeframe, they have not continued to accrue, they only accrued in the timeframe that we gave the, the owner of the property, or the tenant of the property, whoever was in control of the property, uh, the opportunity to clean the property up to avoid our abatement. But once we did the abatement, it now was in compliance, and we stopped the daily civil penalties.
I understand that during that window of time is when the occupants were involved more in keeping the place up.
Yes, and, you know, the bulk of what the, uh, the initial nuisance letter was, was removed at our direction. There were some twelve fifty-three foot trailers parked on the, the property, there was a, a camper parked on the property.
I remember that you said that, thank you. I think that what my motion will be for the full amount of the hard costs, ten percent of the civil penalties. That's my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item?
I just want to say good luck to the owner since he's here, and, and y'all, y'all get your money, and I hope you can get a tenant, so, even if you had to put him in at a low price to keep the property from being abandoned, that's when they get in trouble.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we have a motion on the floor, um, please vote. Post, post. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Keep it up.
Say thank you, Chris, for answering all the questions, just thank you.
You're welcome, Councilwoman, thanks for making my first time so pleasurable.
Okay, we're on to item number fifty-four. EOT four, two, one, seven, nine, extension of time special use permit, non-public hearing applicant Walgreen Company Owner, Wal Trust Properties, Inc., for the possible action on a request for an extension of time of a previously approved special use permit, number three, seven, five, eight, oh, for a seventy-nine square foot accessory package liquor off-sale within an existing thirteen thousand, nine hundred and five square foot retail establishment. At eighty-five hundred West Cheyenne Avenue, APN one, three, eight, zero, eight, eight, one, one, zero, zero, four, C one limited commercial zone. Uh, Councilman and Mayor Protem Anthony, um, and staff has recommended approval. Uh, is the applicant present?
Hi, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, three hundred South Fourth Street. On behalf of Walgreens, this is just an application for an extension of time on a previously approved special use permit, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. Farratt?
Staff recommends approval, we have no other input.
Thank you. Uh, there's a motion, um,
Motion to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion from Councilman Anthony to approve, please vote on the motion. Post. Motion carries, thank you very much. Item number fifty-five, subject, RQR three, four, six, eight, two, abeyance item, required review, public hearing, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor LLC. Owner Bright Path LLC, for possible action on a required review of a previously approved special use permit, four, five, two, one, for a forty-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign, eight, twenty, South Valley View Boulevard. Uh, this is in, in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward One. Planning Commission, um, and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, I now declare it open, is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, Rod Carter, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. We concur with the conditions with the exception of number two. In the staff report, uh, it's being recommended, excuse me, recommended for a three-year approval, a three-year approval. We hope that, uh, we can have number two changed to reflect from a one-year approval to the three years. And with that being said, I'm here for any questions. And thank you for your time, Councilwoman Tarkanian, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else, excuse me, wishing to be heard on this item? Please step forward.
Hodge, one, two, threes a day, but I just want to say you had a busy day, Mr. Tatum, good luck.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, is there a motion, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I move that, um, we approve for two years the, um, item, with all conditions.
So rather than what was stated is the one, or the requested three-year middling it?
Yeah, I'm middling it.
Wife of the basketball coach, what do you expect?
I know. Just eke up.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote. Post. Motion carries, two years.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
And I hope you got my call this afternoon.
In between meetings, but everything's fine.
Okay, moving further on, item fifty-six has been withdrawn, item fifty-seven has been obeyed to September seventh. Item fifty-eight, nine, and sixty. Uh, these are, number fifty-eight, zone four, one, six, oh, six, for possible action on a request for zoning from C one limited commercial to a C two general commercial. Item fifty-nine, um, on the vacancy four, one, six, six, one, for possible action on a request for petition to vacate a portion of public right-of-way of an alley. Number sixty, SDR, uh, forty-one, six, oh, one, for possible action on a request for site development plan review for a pro sixty-two thousand square foot office building and a five-story parking garage with waivers on the downtown Centennial Plan to allow no facade alignment on the ground floor where seventy percent is required, to allow no ground floor retail for the parking garage, and to allow the main entry of the building to not be articulated in the design where required. The applicant is SDA Inc., and the owner is the City of Las Vegas. The applicant is SDA, Inc., and the owner is the City of Las Vegas. The project's located on Point 47 Acres in the southwest corner of Clark Avenue and Sixth Street. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of all of these items. These items are in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present? Afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Biagiani. I'm the applicant president of SDA, Inc. My address is 5550 Lusanne in Reno, Nevada.
Are there, is there anyone wishing to be heard on this matter? So please come forward.
Hodge, one, two, three, Mr. David. It's in Ward 3, Mr. Coffey or whatever you call your name. I'm sorry about that. I don't want to pick on you. But all three of these seem to be in your jurisdiction, so, and, and staff and, and planning all agree that, you know, for approval, so it's your ballpark. Have a good day, sir.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on these items?
I'd like to be heard for just a second.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
Yeah, thank you very much. Steve, would you give a, just a 60-second rundown again for the refresher for the audience here on what this project does and where it is so that the record is clear and so that we make sure that people who feel the compulsion to come up and talk on every issue will be sure to have another chance to come up and talk after you talk.
Very good. Approximately two and a half years ago, the federal government put out a requirement for a build-to-suit office building for the Department of Homeland Security for ICE. And there was a competitive bid on that building over the next two years. And my firm was the successful offeror and had optioned a piece of land from the city, which was the corner of Clark and Las Vegas Building Boulevard. And we are, will be building a five-story office building at that location. We are very pleased to have hired a local general contractor as our construction company to build it and a local architectural firm, 10-9 Architectural Firm. In fact, Ben Giraden is in the audience today. And we're really looking forward to starting this development in September.
Very exciting. Any questions from our council people?
Your honor.
Please.
Just for clarification, Mr. Biagiani.
Yes.
This is not intended to be any kind of a holding facility or a facility to house inmates, is it?
This is an office building. It is not a prison. There will be, probably will be some holding cells during the daytime where if they bring someone in to interview them. But my lease specifically states that no one will be kept overnight in the building.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
I will move for approval, and I'm not sure whether we were taking all three at once.
One at a time.
All right, I move for approval on item 58.
Vote, please. Post, please.
Post, please. Item carries. Item number 59, please.
I move for approval on item 59.
Vote, please. Post, please. Item carries. Item number 60.
I move for approval on item 60.
Vote, please. Item carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Looks like a beautiful building. Is that free parking? Or is that metered or free parking?
The parking will be only for the employees in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Goodman.
It was an effort. Thank you. We'll now move on.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
If I may, Beverly, if you'll please put me down for the last two votes in favor, please.
58, 59, and 60.
All three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now we'll move on to item 61, zoning 41606, Abeyance Item, Rezoning, Public Hearing, Applicant SDA, Inc., Owner City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from C1 Limited Commercial to C2 General Commercial on Point 047 Acres from southwest corner of Clark and Sixth, APNs 13934, 710001, 13934, 310063, and 076, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This, okay, did it say? Oh, my goodness, I'm back. How did that get all clipped together? My apologies, everyone. I read the number 58, which has already been done. This is item 61, and it's SUP 41587, Abeyance Item, Special Use Permit, Public Hearing, Applicant Light Squared, Inc., Owner Barr Acquisitions LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a co-location on an existing wireless communication facility, Stealth Design Monopine at 3811 West Charleston. This is in Zone 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item?
Thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. Do we have some photos on this? There's one that I wanted to speak out on. Is this the one that abuts a school?
It doesn't abut a school, as far as I know. However, it is a very sparsely decorated stealth design, monopine, yes.
It needs, it looked pretty bare.
It is a very bare tree.
My only comment was that, that... I've got a real problem with the school district because if you divide the, the valley up in the grid, between every section-lined street, there's at least one school. And that's about where they want to put the, the density of the cell towers. But the school district, there's, they pay a lot of rent for these, these cell towers. And somebody figured out that the school district could get rent of like $51 million a year. But the school district will not allow this cell tower on their property, even though every kid that you see has got one. And I just, they're always screaming for money, you know, and yet they, I, it just doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item?
Make it real quick. The cell towers, like you said, they're going up all over. And it's a part of, of the advancement of our modern-day communication system, you know, this hello, whatever. So what I'm trying to say, sometime, if they can dress them up in camouflage when they can or whatever, that's a good thing, too. But what I'm trying to say, these cell towers are part of the future. And as he said, it doesn't make sense if the school had something put on their property to get a little extra income, it wouldn't hurt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Yes, I'll have a motion. This is not on school property. Maybe I should have been more firm in my answer before, but it's not.
I didn't say it was on school property. I said it should be.
Oh, it should be? Well, okay. The other questions that came up, however, it's not on school property. It really isn't that close to a school either. You have Wazden Elementary and you have Hyde Park, but it's not, you know, it's far enough away. My concern is that it's a very sparse tree. It does not look very good at all. I'd just like to obey this for a month and ask the applicants to come in and meet with me to see if we, the co-location, it seems like it would fit in, but I'd just like to be sure, sure that we did the best we could. I'm not trying to eliminate it. I'd just like to see if we could approve upon that.
Councilwoman and Mr. Fag, I thought we had already asked for that, that they would be requested to fill this up in our last council meeting?
We actually discussed that matter with the applicant prior to bringing it forward to City Council. Their response to us is that it would not structurally support additional branches or foliage or whatever you want to call the, the decoration there on the pine itself. And so having them address that here in the public hearing might be beneficial.
Well, I, I agree with you. That's what I'm trying to do because I remember we did do that. But my, you know, how do you add all these co-things? And you have enough to hold the weight of that? And I'll bet you if somebody came with a third one, they'd have enough to be able to cover the weight of that, but they don't have enough to cover the weight of adding a few branches to make it more aesthetic for those who live in the area. So I would maintain that I'd like to obey it for 30 days. I'd like to speak personally with the owners.
September 7th. Need a vote on that? To obey, please vote. Post, please. Motion carries and will be obeyed until September 7th. And on to 62, which is also in abeyance till August 17th. Item number 63, DIR 42131, Director's Business, Non-Public Hearing, Applicant Owner Triad Development LLC, for possible action on a required review of a development report is required by subsection 5.1 of that certain development agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Triad Development LLC dated July 18th of 2001 on 11.5 acres generally located south of Village, center east of the Trail, Center Drive. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Wolfson. Staff recommends approval. Is the applicant present? Mr. Fag, anything to add?
As the applicant does not hear in attendance, just for background, on behalf of City Council, with the development agreements that we enter into with developers, there is a required review period where we review the terms of the development agreement and bring those forth to council to report to you. In terms of this specific development agreement, we find that the applicant is in conformance with the terms of the agreement and do recommend approval of this report.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Councilman Wilson?
For approval.
Vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 64, DIR 42201, Director's Business, Non-Public Hearing, Applicant Owner Pino 2, Inc., for possible action on a required review of development report is required by subsection 8.1 of that certain development agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Jack and Laura Summa Adal dated December 18th, 1991 on 638, excuse me, 635.8 acres located northwest corner of Grand, Teton, and Rainbow Boulevard, APNs multiple, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff recommends approval. Is the applicant present? Mr. Fag?
As with the previous agreement, we also find that this one is in conformance with all of the terms of the agreement. For the information to the public, this is the Silverstone Ranch or Mountain Spa Development, as it's more commonly known. Also, the development has been completed. It is built out. And so consequently, this is the last review that we will have on this, and we deem it to be substantially complete and in conformance.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Vote, please, on the motion. Post, please. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 65, Set Date on Any Appeals Filed or Required Public Hearings From the City Planning Commission Meetings in Dangerous Building or Nuisance/Litter Abatements. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you. And moving on to citizens' participation.
Mayor, I have a special request with your permission.
Yes, sir.
No disrespect to any of you who want to speak, but Mayor, I've asked a special guest to come down and visit us today from the World Market Center, Jonathan Leeloo, with your permission and the council's permission. The international market is in town. There's a lot of activity in the downtown area. Certainly, it's Symphony Park, and I thought it only appropriate, since Jonathan and I have been working on some other things together, that he come down and kind of give us a report.
How nice to see you again. We welcome you to the council and we're just thrilled with what's happening. So please do, Councilman Ross, thank you very much. Mr. Leeloo.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. This is the, the first time of, I'm sure many times that you and I will be working together and I'll be appearing in front of you. Welcome to the, to the City Council. This is a great honor for me to, to say hello today. Members of the council, Your Honor, John Leeloo, 495 South Grand Central Parkway, here as the General Counsel of World Market Center of Las Vegas, now known as International Market Centers. As Councilman Ross has indicated, we are now in the third day of our first market, first furniture market as International Market Centers, and I'm happy to report that things are going beautifully. We are seeing an increase in traffic at our facility. We are seeing an increase in buying in our facility. The tenants, the issues with our tenants seem to have leveled off. And we are really enjoying, as, as my CEO mentioned, a new day at World Market Center. It feels a lot like we are reborn down there and, and things are going very well. Last night, we welcomed former President Clinton to our facility. He gave about a 45-minute address and then took some questions from Bob Marisich for another 30, 40 minutes. Everybody was engaged. Everybody is hopeful and everybody is intently waiting on our economy to improve. But it's not necessarily just waiting. It's, we all understand that we all have a role to play in that, and everybody has to get to work to make sure that the economy improves, grows, grows smartly, and then is sustained so that we can get ourselves out of what has been one of the worst recessions of our time. President Clinton was, was enlightening as far as that goes, had some wonderful things to say about the furniture industry and, and our facility, and we were very proud to have him last night. About 10,000 people visited to, to hear President Clinton speak. We've got about 30,000 people on our property. It's, it's been a very, very good and exciting three days.
And, Mayor, if I may, Jonathan, thank you very much. I know you're busier than heck right now to come down here and spend time. Can I read some significant economic numbers?
Please go ahead.
And this is very important for both of us, certainly on the LVCBA. More than 1,000 jobs have been created, are created each market, including caterers, bus drivers, security, parking facilities, engineers, and other contractors. These contractors work the week before and the week of the market and, of course, several days following the market. The International Market Center now has more than 100 permanent employees here in Las Vegas, and it contracts with 22 hotels for more than 20,000 to 25,000 hotel room nights per market. Is that correct? And I've asked Jonathan to pull these numbers for me.
That is correct.
That's, that's huge. It engages 95 buses to service the market attendees. The international market spends more than $7 million annually on the market all by itself. That's your investment. And without taking into account the amounts spent by the attendees, vendors, exhibitors, et cetera. And with respect to the tax increment financing, and this is significant, the World Market Center has paid more than $16 million in property taxes and has received about $6 million in rebates, netting the City of Las Vegas in excess of $10 million over the last six years on property which only generated 200,000 annually before the project was built. And that's not to mention all of the tenants who employ local companies, local contractors, local servicing, service providers to, to continue what they're doing, what you're doing over there right now. And you've got 5.1 million square feet of show space over there, don't you?
That's correct. We've, at, at, at the three buildings by themselves, we have 5.1 million square feet of show space. And now that we are International Market Centers and are now partners with what used to be our very fierce competitors in North Carolina, we are just over 11 and 1/2 million square feet nationwide.
Wow. And Mayor, I thought, and councilmembers, I thought that was just so significant to, to bring that to, to the people's attention of this city, to this council. Jonathan, do you have any idea the economic numbers pumped into the economy by, by just, I mean, and, and I'm not going to hold you to it, but I think, and that's kind of why I wanted you to do the presentation, at least let, let's talk about this because you're generating economy. You're generating revenue. Yes, you're selling furniture, but it's more of an impact than that, certainly on the downtown area and certainly for the Las Vegas Valley. And I think that's the significant part I wanted to bring out. It, it's making a big impact, and I think it's a great show.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I love the partnership. I mean, that has just been such a boon. I know it's going to be great, and I know you all are extremely happy with it. And we're so proud of, of what is occurring, and it's only going to be the beginning of a great future. Any council people want to, any comment? Thank you, Council, oh, thank you, Councilman Ross, for bringing it, and thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters, matters within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No subject may be acted upon. No subject may be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, please. The amount of discussion on any single item, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is going to be allowed, is three minutes. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please come forward.
Name, Anthony Hodge, one, two, three, Sir David. I just want to put up three pictures right quick. I mean, two pictures and a letter. Screen, please. Where I can see it. Here, show up. Okay. That's good. Thank you. Thank you. Now, and this is a letter from President Ronald Reagan addressed to me while he was The two pictures that I showed you by those newspapers about presidents that was assassinated in our country in the zero year. And so when I came out west in sixty-two, I brought three presidents that were assassinated. It was all Republican, party-wise. And then President Kennedy got assassinated, and he was elected in nineteen sixty. And so whatever. And then in nineteen eighty, Ronald Reagan got elected. He got shot, but he lived. Scared me to death, whatever. And then in two thousand, young Mr. Bush, he got elected. And like I told you the last time I was here, when he walked away, when Mr. Obama went in and he went out, when he left the White House in one piece, because he was elected in the zero year two thousand, and I was so glad to see him leave and go home, you know, safe. So he broke that zero year jinx completely. Hey, it's over with, and I could rest better. So what I'm saying, say, we had four presidents assassinated and one almost, and then one walked away. So the zero year is gone. So that's all I want to say, I mean, is that there's things that have been involved with presidents, and there's only two that I never dealt with, and that was Bill Clinton and Gerald Ford. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. We all have a good day. I love you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else heard, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
City Council, Dorothy Barnes, P O Box four-six-six, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-two-five. I'm going to try to make it short and sweet. I'm here once again on people holding my name on the organized crime program and my distress signal being issued while your husband held his office. Several times, I complained on them, Nellis Air Force Base issued my distress signal. It's something they issue for people that's in distress because of these type programs. And I've asked them to discontinue using me and sponsoring me on this program at my own expense. They have created many problems, many hardships, a lot of people in trouble, in distress on Nellis and over here in the civilian community. Someone is responsible for those people's welfare. I have complained to law enforcement. I called them today from my doctor's office. My health is not getting any better with this situation, and they issued my distress signal. It should not be issued out and continually used in a negligent way where it'd bring harm to me or others. So I've asked them to discontinue using and check with the people at the top, report that they have someone free on their program. I did not vote for the program. It's costing me, and later, it may cost them. I am working on getting an attorney on this because they have wasted too much of my time playing with my hometown. I have talked to the people down there, and they said, "We told Las Vegas not to put you on that kind of program because we have problems down here, and we have addressed the problem. And when you went up there, we put a message through to the people that had you not to put you on that type program." Now, if those people, the police is letting them play with you, it's not our fault. So this is the information I'm getting from my hometown. We did give them the information that the programs are no good for you because I am supposed to be reporting into the CIA as a narcotics agent because they have used me to sponsor illegal drugs, and I'm supposed to curtail the drug industry off my ticket so they won't continue to use me to sponsor illegal drugs. I've lost a nephew to get shot to death at nineteen over the drugs in my hometown, raw cocaine. My youngest brother was ex-military police, was shot to death, and my life has been threatened because these people want to sell drugs and make money. They want to use people to sponsor this thing, and I'm not for it. So I want the drug dealers and all the ones that sponsor them to know they cannot get rich off me. I'm not going to continue to sit back and let them do this. And the ones that's going out there, issuing my distress signal, lying to the doctors, lying to the police, lying to the ministries that's trying to help people, it's over. Two thousand and eleven is my year of jubilee. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Margaret Coleman, and I'd like to welcome you to the committee.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to give my point of view. I haven't been here for a while, and this has been concerning the avenues that I have taken concerning a court order, rip off, money taken, me placed into the streets. I have taken a new avenue. What I want you to do is recognize me as an important person, that I could benefit the community, the city, and be part of the board members. Now, I'm trying to talk as intelligent as I can. My money have benefit the community and the City Council, each one of the Board of Commissioners, the mayor, your husband, a lot of the attorneys. I have contributed with patience and endurance. I had won a court order that was worth three billion dollars, as, well, three million in the beginning, but my one percent stock has given me the opportunity to have, sell it for three million due to the fact I have partnership to Golden Nugget. I have partnership to Permanent Outlet. I haven't been recognized. That's one reason why I want you to recognize me. Now, my appearance has not improved due to the fact I'm on social security. That is a limited amount of money. I'm at the bottom of the level to improve myself. I have been at the bottom where I should have been at the top. I have recognized a lot of improvement for the senior citizens as well as the homeless, the deprived, and they have placed me in that category. So I would like you to give me at least, because I'm changing the avenue of trying to get the three billion, if you could give me my work miss compensation that I'm credited to do of three million, I can use it either to build me a home because the places that I have lived and I have looked at, the citizens that is senior citizens as myself, I'm fifty-nine, we are living in roach-confested.
Okay, you're very close to being out of town, so if you can close it up, please, for us, your time. Thank you.
We're living in roach-confested, centipes, bedbugs apartments. I have, I'm supposed to be at a high level, whereas I should not be living like that because I won a court order that's worth three million and a one percent stock worth three billion. I shouldn't be living there. But I have been placed there because of all the illegal people that I have been investigating up on my case, and I have contributed to the police department, the Internal Affairs, to find these people. Now, if you could give me the three million, I can either improve myself, get off the streets.
My suggestion is, I think, as you're out of time, what I would suggest is our social services.
I'll wind it up. Whereas we can use, I can use my money to improve myself and also some of the senior citizens complex such as Park Forest, Desert Roads Complex. These places are a disgrace.
Well, I know we're trying to work on them, so please, we thank you very much.
And a lot of them are far-closer property, and we're being charged for no reason, just to hustlers.
Thank you.
And I would like to get out of that position and improve myself because people, when I'm walking, they looking at me as a prostitute. I don't like that.
Well, we thank you for your comments, here. We appreciate it.
So I'd like to get me a car. I would like to get me a new car. I would appreciate if you pay attention to my requests and put me on the agenda. All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Thank you, Todd Barlow, two forty North Knight Heath Street. I'm the last one, I guess. I'm here to encourage the Council to get the legal staff to draw up an ordinance or something to get us out of this mortgage mess. I talked about Wells Fargo the last time. I'm with Bank of America this time. This Bank of America that we know now is not the old Bank of America, the old Bank of Italy from San Francisco. This, that was out of the San Francisco Federal Reserve system. The people that own it now was Ken Lay and that group that's out of the Richmond Federal Reserve system. They were no good. They took the good name of Bank of America and put it on the shoddy schemes that they had going. Mother Jones, January, February two thousand and ten, their investigative fund did an investigation on the total amount that the American people are under, that they're on the hook for on these bailouts. It exceeds the budget deficit that's out there now. The total that we have out there that we're obligated for, that we've signed up for, is over fourteen trillion, that's a T, dollars, over fourteen trillion. Of that, Bank of America with their ownership of Countrywide and Merrill Lynch is on the hook for one point three trillion dollars. Their total capitalization is forty-seven billion. They just pleaded guilty to that robo-signing deal because they were the service agent of the bank. They did not own the mortgage. They, it was, it's against the law. Only the owner of the mortgage can foreclose. So they settled up, but the civil suits have not even begun yet, and those civil suits are going to way exceed the capitalization cost of Bank of America. They're in such, they'll never get out of it. Basically, they'll never get out of it, and we're going to bail them out one way or another. My problem is this, what, it's going to take a decade for that thing to get through the legal system. Are we going to have to look at those foreclosed, those boarded-up homes? I've got forty-nine homes in my precincts that's boarded up. We're going to have to look at that until they go all the way through this court day? We might be here twenty years because there's no way that they can.
We're sensitive to you, and I'm sorry you're out of time, but thank you. Thank you. And we will now move on to item number sixty-seven, and it's Councilmember recognition. Comments may be made by individual City Council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. I would like to call on each individual Councilmember who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Every month, I host my Coffee with the Councilman at Starbucks at the corner of Rancho and Bonanza, and we will be there tomorrow at nine AM to ten AM, so I encourage the community to come out and have an opportunity to sit with me and talk about any issues that's on your heart or your mind. And we've had a nice turnout the last several months, and I don't expect that to change. So please come out and sit with me and share with me your thoughts on how, in fact, I can assist you. Secondly, my Back-to-School Fair, my annual Back-to-School Fair is taking place at the Doolittle Community Center, August thirteenth, starting at nine AM. Doors will open. There will be backpacks full of school supplies. I want to make sure that the backpack, the backpacks in which I have goes toward those ages five to twelve. The backpacks are full of school supplies. I want to make sure that each student have an opportunity to return to the classroom with all the essential tools in order to be successful. So parents, if in fact your son or daughter is without a backpack for this school year, please stop by the Doolittle Community Center and receive your free backpack while supplies last. So I want to make sure that we put that out there. Also, on August thirteenth, NV Energy is hosting a senior fair, and that senior fair is taking place at the Cashman Center located at eight fifty Las Vegas Boulevard. So for all those seniors who are in need of energy assistance, please go out to the Cashman Center and on August thirteenth. And there's a lot of information that you can receive from NV Energy, and that time is from ten AM to two PM. The West Las Vegas Art Center staff quarterly invite you to the reception for Images of America West Las Vegas. The historic gathering will celebrate those pioneers who have trailblazed the West Las Vegas community boldly into the twenty-first century, and that will be taking place Saturday, August twentieth, starting at two PM. So please go out to the West Las Vegas Art Center to enjoy that event taking place on August twentieth, two PM. And in conclusion, we, my office in conjunction with the Planning and Development Department will, has been hosting walkable community meetings. We had a great meeting on last night at the Doolittle Community Center, and the next two meetings will take place on August twenty-third. That will, that will take place at the Elks Lodge located at six hundred West Owens, starting at six PM, and September fourteenth will be the final walkable community meeting, neighborhood meeting, taking place at the Andre Agassi Boys and Girls Club, eight hundred North Martin Luther King Boulevard. And I encourage all Ward Five residents to please visit my website at www.lasvegasnevada, all spelled out, lasvegasnevada.gov/wardfive to also review additional information as it relates to the walkable community, and also, please take the survey as it relates to the walkable community as well. So that is the update from Ward Five, and Mayor and Council, thank you so very much for allowing me the time to share the Ward Five community calendar.
Thank you very much, Councilman Barlow. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
We had a very successful night out last night with a Back-to-School Fair and National Night Out combined, and I believe we had a total of about twenty-five hundred people is what I was told. So we were very pleased with that, and I would like to say that we try to combine our events so we can have them at maybe the same time, and maybe it is more effective for families as far as their scheduling is concerned. But our next one is August eleventh, and we will have it at the rededication of Rotary Park. Our staff has done a tremendous job in improving the park, adding more family facilities, more sitting areas. It really is beautiful. It's right next to Hyde Park, and we're sort of getting a hub of activity there between Hyde Park and Craigan Park and the fire station and Rotary. So it will start at five o'clock on August eleventh, and we will begin with distributing the book packs for children for the Back-to-School Fair, and we will then have activities and games for the youngsters in the park, and we will follow it with a movie at dusk that, Furry Vengeance. I've never seen that movie before, but that's what's been selected, and we'll be showing that. So I hope everybody who lives anywhere near the area that would like to come will come. I think it'll be most enjoyable. First, you can see the facilities the city has and what we're doing and improvements we're making, and secondly, it's great for Back-to-School for the children, and then it's fun for family. There'll be many booths there, there'll be many vendors there, and we hope you all be able to come. Secondly, at Clark High School, we will be opening this fall a dental examination and clinic right there, and one of the modules that we used before for our community activities when we had to drop that, we then use, it's working with Future Smiles, a nonprofit group here in the community, so we'll have children who'll be able to come there for free examinations and education with their families, and that will be starting when school begins. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. I have two announcements, please. The first is Friday, August twelfth, I will be hosting our annual Ward Two Back-to-School Fair and movie in the park. I think this is our sixth or seventh Back-to-School Fair in a row. It starts on August twelfth at It starts on August twelfth at six-thirty. There are free backpacks, and I've been assured this time that we will have plenty of pink backpacks. You know, it's really disappointing when you're standing there and you're handing out backpacks to the kids, and there's always more little girls than little boys. And towards the end of the session, when you're handing out the backpacks, you know, sure enough, that last little girl comes up, and she wants a pink backpack, and you're out of them. So I've been assured by my staff this year that we've got an overabundance of pink backpacks. There will be...
Councilman, I just want to tell you, watch out for the purple, too. We had pink ones left last night, which we got a good amount ordered, but the purple were gone halfway through.
They were popular?
By the little girls.
Okay, well, I want just enough pink ones. And they will all have school supplies, and they'll be handed out to the first five hundred students. The Movie in the Park begins at dusk. This year, we are showing the Disney movie Tangled. Before the movie, there will be a lot of community vendors handing out additional free school supplies, a fun movie-themed craft project, a DJ, face painters, and more. What else could you ask for? The event is free and open to the public. We'll hand out snacks for the movie, but I encourage people to bring blankets and picnic dinner to enjoy while watching the movie. For more information about this event and becoming a vendor, contact my office at two-two-nine-six-four-zero-five. Secondly, every council meeting, I show you a picture of a missing child, and that's the cue to our production people to put the picture up. There it is. Please turn your attention to the screen and take a look at Samina Zuniga. Samina has been missing since June fourth of this year. She's fourteen years old, and we're asking your help in locating this young lady. She's five foot six inches tall, weighs a hundred and twenty pounds. She's African-American and has dark brown eyes and black hair. Samina was last seen in the area of Boulder and Stephanie Street, wearing a white tank top, a long-sleeved shirt with a checker pattern, and dark blue jeans. The more people we have looking for these missing children, the increased chances we have of finding them. If you know where Samina is, please contact Nevada Child Seekers at seven oh two four-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-nine, or Las Vegas Metro Missing Persons Unit at eight-two-eight-three-one-one-one. Thank you, Mayor Goodman.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfson. Mayor Broten?
Nothing.
No announcements? Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be remiss in my duties as a father and a grandfather, not to mention my daughter, Jade, on Saturday gave birth to her third child, a daughter, so that is my eighth grandchild, my second granddaughter. Her name is Sawyer Jade Wilkinson, and both baby and mother are doing fine. Thanks, Todd, appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Excited about that. Our family continues to grow, and I've been very blessed. There's no reason in the world that a child should go to school as school starts next, this month, to not have something. If all of us are having these back-to-school fairs, there's no reason in the world. I, too, am having the annual Centennial Hills Back-to-School Fair. That's this Friday night, however, August fifth, from six-thirty to nine-thirty, and we also will be showing, having a Movie in the Park in the Centennial Hills Amphitheater. The movie will be Tangled. Councilman, if you have not seen that film, I have, and it's a pretty good movie. The sponsor of the movie, of course, is a wonderful community partner, Smoothie King. I'll be handing out popcorn and goodies to the kids. The back-to-school event, I've only got five hun, the first five hundred kids that show up will get back-to-school stuff. So folks, you know how great this event is. We always get four or five thousand people out there. I hope we don't run out too soon with the goodies. Also, on August eleventh, and this is something, Mr. Farlow, that hits home with you, I will be attending a foreclosure information presentation by my good friends at Coldwell Banker out at Centennial Hills Community Center. They will be giving a market overview, available options for homeowners in neighborhood, and their neighborhood awareness experience. I will be there also to discuss what the city of Las Vegas has been doing about the foreclosure nightmare. We'll also be giving a presentation on the StopNVForeclosures.org website and the red flag warnings for Las Vegas homeowners. So if anyone can attend that, it would be nice to see you out there, and maybe we can help you save your home or help you make some difficult decisions. Thank you, Mayor. That event begins at six PM, August eleventh, Centennial Hills Community Center, most likely in the community room next to my office.
Thank you, Councilman. And I see Councilman Coffin had to leave, so I gather there is nothing else, and hearing nothing else, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all very much for your participation.